Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Kingman City Council Work Session on Tuesday, May 25, 2021, at 1:30. This is a work session and so roll call is not needed. And also the protocols of city council don't apply. We can talk freely as we move forward. So this is a work session. The primary purpose is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects, in this case, our budget. And I think that's really about all that needs to be said, except that this is a two-part meeting. We are having one this afternoon and one tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. And we'll be hearing from staff regarding the City of Kingman fiscal year 2021 to '22 operating and capital budgets. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for your time today. Appreciate everybody's willingness to come during the business hours, recognizing that many of you have other things that you need to be doing. So appreciate your time and want to make sure that we recognize the team. My team, for the most part, we've invited to take part in this by Zoom, just so this room isn't totally packed, and appreciate that. And Counselor Nelson is on the Zoom call as well. So just want to make sure that she's recognized and want to thank everybody. Just as a reminder, one of the things that we want to make sure is if you have comments, questions, that we get those answered. Please go ahead and let us know when you have questions or comments. This is an open dialogue. We want to make sure everybody understands. And also, please use your microphone, speak up and speak clearly. We've had some folks that are not able to hear some of the comments through Zoom. Keith, you're right over there. And so with that, just remember that the green light on your microphone needs to be on when you speak. So just as... Yes, enclosed. So thank you for that. All right. Well, let's get started. Welcome, Counselor. Great to have you.
All right.
You're fine. All right. Our objectives for this, this Part 1 and Part 2 of this budget process is to provide you with an overview of the budget development, a review of the council priorities, as well as our citizen priorities. Although we did not do a citizen survey this last fiscal, or this fiscal year, we are still operating from the information provided, or the input provided by the citizens in the last citizen survey. Of course, we want to identify for you the budget highlights. We want to go through the 20, the budget, the 22 budget recommendations for each of our operating divisions. And then we're going to go through the five-year capital improvement plan and cover the highlights in the five-year capital improvement plan. So budget development, I think most of you know that this process starts quite, quite, quite earlier than where we are today. Actually, it starts back in last year. Oh, thank you, Ms. Tina. We started in November of 2020 to identify capital projects. Worked through January. You'll recall, we had our, kind of our kickoff meeting with the council with how are we doing so far and where is our five-year forecast for both expenditures and revenues. We did our council retreat in February. And then, May 20, we have Tina and her team, who've compiled with the help of the senior leadership team, basically combined, combined all of that and brought that together, May 20. And here we are today. And then tomorrow as well. And then we'll adopt the tentative budget on the 15th of June. And then we'll have a special meeting on the 28th of June. Please mark that on your calendar. I'm guessing it's already there, but just make sure that it is there. That will be a special morning, quick meeting. Don't expect it to be much longer than 10 minutes. It will be offered as a hybrid meeting, so you don't necessarily have to pull yourself away from work. You can participate through Zoom on that. But that will be when we adopt our final budget. So I've already talked a little bit about this, so won't spend a whole bunch of time on it. Citizen survey input was used, the council retreat, the information that the council provided at that was used to develop this budget. We have taken the capital projects and aligned those with our strategic plan, as well as the goals set at this year's retreat. And then, of course, we have forecasted revenues and fund balances that we have to kind of follow to make sure that we're providing you with a balanced budget. And then, of course, we evaluate programs and services and costs to provide them as part of the development of the budget. And then finally, we are giving you a balanced budget. And just as a reminder, I think probably everybody knows this, but just as a reminder, our council strategic priorities are that we, the things that we do, both services and projects, are, they're improving city services and livability. We're looking at modernization, economic prosperity, communication and teamwork, partnership, and culture. And from this year's retreat, you'll notice the boxes that are checked are specifically addressed in the budget this year. The ones that are highlighted just in, with a yellow arrow, are in the plan, but, and will be taken on at some point when they are viable or required. So based on those goals, we have determined next steps for street maintenance. That was a funding conversation primarily, but the budget actually accomplishes some of that, so we have a checkmark there. Beautification of downtown and build on the downtown streetscape, that's got a checkmark. Diversify water sources, we are working on that with the 2022 budget. The established design standards for Phase 2 of the industrial park is yet to come. We're still working on the release of that property to get it to that point. And of course, we will look on a yearly basis at recycling and what the markets are looking like to see if that's something that we can bring back into a service that we offer. Of course, expand our branding and marketing. Last year, we moved into our new marketing and brand. We've, we've made good strides, but there's more to be done on that. And there, that is anticipated in this budget. We're going to work with Mojave County to attract new businesses. That's kind of ongoing. Nothing specific in this budget, so it just remains something that we're working on. Identify ways to make Kingman a travel destination. I think you'll see a number of items in the budget that address this. And then revisit the foreign trade zone. Of course, we've had a study done on that. And until we have a business that qualifies, there's really not much to be done on that. When we have someone that wants to be in a foreign trade zone, we will actively get that designation. So that is the goals based on this year's retreat. As far as the citizen survey, it may be, have been a while since you've looked at it. So just as a reminder, these are the categories and how they were ranked. Of course, our citizens were very concerned and wanted to make sure that we were concentrating on the economic health of Kingman. I think you'll see that throughout the budget and what we're proposing. Overall safety of Kingman, I think that's both fire and police services. Again, I think you'll see an emphasis in that, those areas as well. And then followed by health and wellness. Again, I'm happy to report that we, we have items in the budget that address that and looking forward to helping with that. And then the, the rest of those fall, in some, in some sense, in the budget as well. And then the, the other question, specific to Kingman, is please indicate how important, if, if at all, each of the following projects or issues are to the city. Maintaining and improving streets, clearly that was for the citizens in 2019 extremely important. And again, you'll see some real emphasis on, on taking that on, knowing that we still have some, quite a bit of work to do specifically on the revenue generation side. And then right behind that is increasing youth and adult recreation program offerings. Again, I think you'll see in the budget efforts to accomplish that, investing in the historic downtown streetscape and infrastructure. Already mentioned that as well as, and then right off, right behind that is citywide beautification efforts, which we have been making this year and will be making next year as well, which you will see. All right, budget highlights. So in, in developing the budget, it's, I think, important for everybody to kind of understand what the thought process is as we sit down with the leadership team, as Tina works through the numbers. Obviously, we want to make sure that the five-year forecast, both revenues and expenditures, are hitting their marks, that we can provide the services that, that, that our citizens expect, and that we're working on livability. Those, those items that make this community a place where people want to live and as they, as they grow up, that they want to stay. So those are items, clearly, that we've got to take into consideration. So as, as we, as we built the budget, obviously, one of the big items that we, that we've been working with is the federal stimulus money. Both the money that came in early, called CARES Act money, as well as the American, what am I blanking on?
Rescue Plan.
The rescue plan, yes, thank you. And so those things, of course, were priority. And then it's, those packages, will there be additional packages? You know, what, there's, at the federal level, there's still talk about infrastructure, building our American infrastructure, AKA roads, bridges, water systems, sewer systems. How, how will that play out into the future? The, there's also in, as we looked at the budget, kind of what's the fallout of these packages? You know, are we going to face large inflation increases in pricing? Will the dollar be worth what it, what it was? How does that, you know, so all of that kind of economy stuff works into that. Again, as, as we move out of the pandemic, you know, what will, will people be able to cover their mortgages? What will be the price of property? All of that kind of stuff. The, the big thing with COVID, I don't know if you've been noticing or if you've heard, I'm sure you have, that prices of construction material have skyrocketed and it's been all pointed to COVID. The supply, the basic economics 101 is that we have, you know, supply and demand. And, you know, right now, we have manufacturers saying that COVID has been impacting them and that, so the supply is down, so prices are up. So in, in looking and listening to economists, ultimately, what does that mean for our 22, our fiscal '22 budget? There's, you know, again, we have COVID return-to-work policies that are in, in the state of Arizona. And how does that ultimately affect unemployment? All of these things go into what our considerations were when we created the forecast for this budget, as well as the next four years past that. And then finally, year-to-date, our sales tax collection's up 17%. That is something, clearly, that we did not predict. We, back when the pandemic was declared in March of 2020, we immediately cut budgets. In the fact, in cutting budgets, we asked departments to stop spending. And then we developed a 2021 budget that was definitely, I don't want to call it skinny, but, but definitely cut back. And so the results of that, of that have been a, a large increase in sales tax that was unexpected. The question ultimately for us is, how does that look moving forward? Because a lot of our forecasting is done through trending. You know, what does our trend look like over the last five, 10, 20 years? And so all of those things have been considered as we built the budget. And I think kind of the result of us cutting back quite a bit in 20, in our 2020 budget, last quarter of the year, and taking a really conservative approach, has resulted in a very healthy fund balance that's going to result in some really great capital projects and will allow us to address some livability issues that in the past, we didn't even think we could do. So there's some really great news in this budget. And it's, it's been, I have to say, it's been a lot of fun putting it together. Still some challenges, but it is, it has definitely been fun. All right. For the next section, I'm going to turn it over to Tina to walk you through kind of what we're seeing for revenues and expenditures.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So the total revenues, I like to share what it was, what we predicted last year, what we adopted for last year, and then for this year. And you'll see that there is a pretty good increase of over $50 million year over year. And I can say that that is primarily related to the recent resolution that you passed to issue pension obligation bonds. We'll be receiving almost $40 million in debt proceeds, which is a revenue as far as this table is concerned. So that is the largest increase. Additionally, there is an increase of a couple of million dollars on contributions. The contributions have to do with any sort of outside participation that we receive on projects or programs. So for instance, on our Rancho Santa Fe project, as Mr. Foggan alluded to, construction costs are, are going up. And we are sharing that project 50/50 with the developer. And so their contribution, of course, is increasing. Or we have predicted that anyhow in, in the budget. And so that's also another reason for the increase in total revenues. Otherwise, it's pretty, pretty similar. So I'd like to share a little bit about how we came up with our assumptions on the revenues and what that looks like for fiscal year '22, and in some cases, what the out-years look like as well. I think the first and most important piece is the federal funding that we have received this year and that we expect to receive last year. So we know that through the CARES Act and the AZ CARES Act, we actually collected $3.6 million. 3.3 of that went directly into the general fund. That was collected in early fiscal year '21. And based on the original allocation, allocations for the American Rescue Plan, we are expecting to collect $7.4 million. And those will be evenly distributed in two lump sums at the end of this year. So really, we could request that at any time. And really, we are planning on requesting that before the end of this fiscal year and in May of next year. We know that there is some speculation out there as far as what we will actually receive based on interim final guidance, but we are pushing to get those numbers back to $7.4 million. So until that, until we know for certain, we have put $7.4 million in the budget. The TPT collections. So Mr. Foggan shared that we're up 17%. We have not recognized that sort of increase, except in 2005 and 2006, we know what happened during that time. That was the boom, and then we had a decrease. Normally, we're anywhere between 3% and 6%. And so is that sustainable? We do not believe so, based on the way people are spending money right now and how we think they'll tighten their belts going into the future, and based on costs alone. And so we have actually estimated that revenues will decline slightly and be back to the pre-pandemic levels of about 8%. So we are, so we are estimating a 2.8% decline in our sales tax revenues, which is still an outstanding performance when we look at the last two years alone. So...
Are you including most of that 17% to the stimulus?
I'm so loud, I always don't think I need a microphone. Is it, do we think most of that is because of the stimulus money and that spending, the additional 17% that the city got? That's what we're thinking.
Okay. Thank you.
I will, I will put in also that people took disposable income during the pandemic and invested in properties, their properties. And we don't, you know, there's only so many home projects you can do. And so, yeah, well, I know at my house, there's a list that never ending, but unfortunately, the amount in the bank account says how much I can do. And I think that's what we'll end up kind of seeing, is that equalize out to some degree after that. Kind of, I would say that, that money is gone, so.
Let's see, state shared revenues. They are also predicting a slight decline in some of the distributions that we, that we receive. So we know that we receive four different types of distributions from the state. That is sales tax. They're actually projecting an increase in sales tax. And we are also projecting an increase based on their estimates for the state shared sales tax. We also have their income tax distribution. They're expecting a decrease. We've also put that decrease into place. They're also expecting a decrease in HER funding, so we have put that into place as well. They are expecting a slight increase in vehicle license tax. Because what they typically will project we don't always collect, we've kept it pretty level. So, so overall, we have adopted what the state shared revenues or what the state has expected to collect next year. I do want to touch on a couple of areas on the state shared revenues. One is with the recreational marijuana proposition that passed, there's a portion of those monies that are going to be distributed to cities and towns based on your police and fire workers. And so we expect to collect some of that money in fiscal year '22, maybe $150,000 to $200,000. And then going forward, it would increase on that based on sales. So it's a small distribution, but something that we will be receiving. And then, of course, there's a lot of talk out there about the income tax distribution that is in, or lack of income tax distribution that the state's putting in, into place in their budget. We know that the legislators want to approve that. And there's a lot of pushback from cities and towns on that. What that ultimately looks like for this year and for the next year and for the, and for the following year is not going, it's not going to impact us. But it will impact us in fiscal year '24, '25, '26. And ultimately, in fiscal year '27 is when we will be hit the hardest, based on their current plan. So it'll be a phased-in approach, is what it appears to be, which is why the first three years, we wouldn't be hit that hard. Plus, they're willing to, at this point, possibly hold us harmless, meaning they'll kind of fill in the gaps over the next few years, making us whole. But in that fourth year, at that point, we would be required to, to have that entire impact hit us, which would be about $1.4 million. So a pretty significant impact, clearly in the out-years, but something that is included in our five-year forecast.
Tina?
Yes.
You're talking about the flat tax, right?
I am.
The 2.5, the effort to reduce it to 2.5. So to hold the cities harmless, I've heard that currently, it's 15% that we receive, that it would have to go up to about 19% that the cities receive. Is that what you are hearing?
So I heard, to make us completely whole, the distribution itself would have to go up to 31% based on the new, the new impacts that the state has come up with. But what they're thinking of as far as making us whole, is they're saying that we're going to have, they're going to have increased sales tax, increased sales tax over the next few years. That's what they're projecting. So any decrease in the income tax distribution versus the increase in sales tax distribution, they would give us whatever that difference is over the next few years. And then at that, that final fourth year, they would give us nothing. Now, again, this is all just developing day by day, really, because they're hoping to adopt a budget as soon as possible. So it could certainly change by then as well. Something the League is definitely honed in on and is sharing information with us all the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I recently saw some information that Lake Havasu was in support of. Did I, did I not read that correctly?
I can't imagine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I believe they've been actively working against this along with the League and the rest of the cities.
Okay, okay. I'll have to check my sources. Thank you.
Yep.
I believe that too. And, and one of the things that's been pointed out, and we, we really do appreciate the League working so hard on this, and others have too. And I really appreciated previous Governor Jam Brewer's comments in an op-ed this past week, where she said, you know, last year, they were predicting a deficit this year, they're predicting a lot bigger revenues, and it's just hard to tell right now. And it's not time to take such a drastic step, do some temporary things until we really know how revenues are going to go forth in the future. So I'm hoping the League will prevail on this with our support.
Yeah. And I will just say, from the, the Dorn Policy Group, who've been working this behind the scenes for us, they're getting reports back that there's not consensus within the Republican Party for this. And it's certainly far from a done deal. So we'll keep, we'll keep our fingers on the pulse of that.
That's very encouraging. Thank you.
Mayor, will you pull your microphone closer when you talk, because I can't hear you.
I will do that. And now I can tell the difference. So thank you for bringing that up.
When you're close, you don't really notice.
And then lastly, on building permits, we've had a few years of really great growth, especially fiscal year '20. And then in fiscal year '21, almost up 20%. And so, again, because construction costs are increasing and, and looking at a few of the other assumptions, people spending money, people having to go back to work, people that used to telework, just here in our organization, we know that we've hired a few new people who have moved here because their spouse is able to telecommute. Well, that may end too. And so taking all of that into consideration, we do think building's going to be strong, but that it won't surpass where we were in, where we expect to end in '21. So TPT collections, just wanted to point out kind of where we were thinking and what areas. These are the four largest generating categories for TBT. So where do we think that's going to look like in fiscal year '22 compared to '21? So again, a slight decrease in retail, people tightening their belts and all of that disposable income restaurants. And then, of course, with building permits down, construction sales tax down slightly. But we do think that bed tax and tourism is going to increase. We're starting to see that get back to pre-pandemic levels. And so we do think that it will exceed it by the end of fiscal year '22. So additional revenues, impact fees, we've been talking about that for almost two years now. And we are nearing the home stretch and have a public hearing coming up on June 15. Not knowing if the fees will be adopted at the recommended rate, at a reduced rate, or even at all, we are not projecting anything in fiscal year '22 and have not put anything in the out-years at this point either. Charges for services, it is a large number in our revenues, over $20 million. So just wanted to point out some of those user fees. And they're all pretty standard as far as the use of them. However, parks, recreation and pools definitely had a decrease last year. We didn't have as many programs to offer. We expect those and the golf course to increase to pre-pandemic levels. As far as the golf course is concerned, they had a huge year, more than, a double-digit increase. In talking to Greg over there, he said that was one time, and we don't expect that to happen again. So a decline in golf, but certainly above pre-pandemic levels. And then water and wastewater will increase based on building and then just recurring, recurring revenues. But a slight decline from this year, based on building, of course. And then solid waste includes the adopted rate increase that was approved just recently, that goes into effect July 1. On the airport, we're including long-term lease rate increases of 3%. That's been standard since we've taken on the operations of the airport. We are experiencing parking fee increases and expect that to happen through the rest of fiscal year '22, so of 10%. We are not, at this point, putting anything into place for rate increases for the short-term leases. There will be something coming to you as far as a rate study with the airport rates, I believe it's June 1. But again, not knowing what that looks like or when that will go into place, we have not put anything into the budget for fiscal year So then moving on to appropriations. So total appropriations, meaning every single expense throughout the organization is included here. And so in fiscal year '21, our total appropriations were $222.7 million. You see an increase, a large part of that, 34, just over $34 million has to do with the issuance of the pension obligation bonds. And then you'll also see a pretty large increase when we look at that chart in capital projects or capital outlay. And we'll go over those later in the, in the presentation and talk to you about the increase in that, in that category. Operating budgets. So Mr. Foggan shared, and you were aware that we decreased our operating budgets last year. We didn't fill certain positions, left them vacant. We decreased just overall operating budget spending. And so '21's adopted budget, we, for the operating budgets, was, is clearly less than where we are today. But even where you look at where we are today, it looks pretty in line with, with the fiscal year '20 adopted. However, I do want to point out that $2.9 million of what would have been spent in '22 on PSPRS is going away, which makes it more of a, I want to say, I think it's a 5% to 6% increase is what we're actually experiencing. a 5% to 6% increase, is what we're actually experiencing if we take that into consideration. And these are the operating budgets comparisons by fund, so you just saw in whole, and this is by fund. It looks like the general fund is in line with last year, but we know that that is not the case if we take into consideration the unfunded liability. There's a large increase in HERF, and we'll be sharing that in just a few, in a little bit, on why that's taking place. And then the other large increases are in internal services, and we'll talk about those as well.
All right. All right, I want to talk to you a little bit about personnel costs, summary of that. Tina had talked a little bit about how we deferred some positions for the 2021, not knowing what that was going to look like. So this may look like a few more positions that we're adding, but take into account that some of these positions were supposed to be in 2021, and we've done without them. So it's not, it's not quite as dramatic of an increase as it looks. So I'm going to run through these really quickly. These have been vetted and really discussed heavily with each of the departments, they've provided the necessary backup for these positions, and so we have included them. So at the airport, operation and maintenance specialist, that will actually allow us to provide seven-day-a-week service at the airport, which is something that we've never been able to do prior to this position being added. We've been working towards it, but without this position, seven days was not quite within reach. This will actually put our team out at the airport, seven days a week, which we're really excited about. Building maintenance, facilities, custodian, we've just added space, and we're desperate for additional help there. The dispatch center, I think you recall Chief Rhodes talking about how they're doing at their annual report to you a couple months ago, calls into dispatch are just ever increasing, so a telecommunicator is going to be added there. Fleet services, we are becoming more and more efficient and doing a great job with our fleet, but that means that we're really needing two people to help move the fleet forward, so we're adding a fleet technician and a service technician. Then, under community development, a new building and life safety inspector is being put into the budget. And then for fire, we're adding two additional firefighter positions, this will actually allow the fire department to run their medical call unit five days a week, something that we've only been able to do part-time. So we're excited to be able to offer this on medical call service to our residents, who have a large number of, a majority of our calls are for medical help. And then our human resources, with adding and growing our team, we also need more help in HR, so we have administrative assistant. In the police department, another administrative assistant to help with really becoming accredited is an amazing piece of work that our police department did. I think the council's recognized the importance of that, but that means we have additional work that needs to be done, and so administrative assistance being added there. Under the police department, Magnet has an administrative secretary, although this money doesn't come directly out of our funds, it is, that person is our responsibility, so. And then, under the streets department, we are desperate for a sign and marking technician to give more attention to our sign program. And then finally, at our, with tourism, with our effort to recline back into our tourism economy, an administrative assistant is needed in order to free up more of Josh Noble's time, so that he can go to tour bus conferences, tourism conferences, and do the things that he needs to be doing away from his desk, which we don't want him necessarily tied to. So that, those are the positions that are in this budget, it basically equates to $837,000 in additional employee costs. Under continuing with personnel costs, this year, we have in the budget a 3% salary increase for our employees, and then, one of the things that the city has not done in the past, which has put our employees behind, is the city has not really recognized the cost of living. So in sitting down with Tina and our HR folks, we, to stay competitive in the market, our salaries have got to grow at least by the inflation rate, so that is going to be proposed, 1.7%. And that cost of living will take place January 1st of 2021. So the 3% increase will be start of fiscal year, which is July 1st, and then the cost of living, January 1st. For benefits, we've actually had a great year, and our benefit package only went up by a very small percentage, and so we are going to absorb that, instead of passing that on to the employees. The cost to the city is about $95,000. ASRS rates did increase very slightly, that will cost us about $28,000. And, of course, we had a huge decrease in PSPRS, and so you're seeing a reduction of $3 million there, which we're really excited about, because we'll show you what we're proposing to do with that, that money. And then, of course, the PSPRS unfunded liability, bond issue, debt will be incurred, and we will pay $2.64 million in fiscal 2022. We wanted to show you this graph, because it's so fun. So our state retirement has been skyrocketing, and then it plummets because of the effort that you all helped us do, which is take care of our unfunded liability, so that really PSPRS drops and is now going to run fairly consistently with our regular state retirement employees. So we're really excited about that, wanted to show this graph off.
I did, yeah, this is a great graph.
Yeah, this is showing off. All right. Thanks, Tina.
All right, so a couple of funds that we want to highlight, of course, the general fund, we want to share a few key items in the general fund, and then we'll talk a little bit about the HERF fund as well. I have some arrows on some of the rows that I want to point out, always just want to point out our local sales tax in the general fund, how we are expecting a slight decline. Again, that's an increase from pre-pandemic, just a decline from sustaining the growth that we experienced in '21. Also, looking down at other financing sources, that second arrow, that shows the monies coming in from those pension obligation bonds, the debt issuance associated with them anyhow, I'm sorry, the debt proceeds associated with them.
Wait, 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 I've got to tell, on this line, we went through our rating process, so you have to go through a bond rating process to get rated. And we've been spending the last, since you approved it, we've been working on getting the ratings in place and all that. And I'm happy to report that we've been rated a AA rating, which is fantastic for the size of our community, just great, great news, which is going to ultimately result in greater cost savings than we actually were able to show you when it was presented, it was presented to you as a AA minus, and we came in at a AA, which is an even better interest rate than we were going to get, so. Got to brag on you.
Well, and just brag in general on, yeah, absolutely, on our budget development process, and what you've done with the budget. A couple of factors that they highlighted was, one, that we have excellent reserves for any of those economic downturns, that was one of the reasons. Another reason was that they see the growth in our sales tax sustaining over, you know, not having the decreases, the large decreases. And so those are two areas that they, that both rating agencies pointed out, and I wanted to be sure that you guys are aware of, too, so. So the third arrow is our, it says intergovernmental, that happened, that is our Arizona CARES Act money in fiscal year '22, I'm sorry, '21, and then the $3.7 million, you'll see we have that identified for fiscal year '22. And then down in the expenditures, you'll see the large increase in internal services, and you're going to see these throughout all the operating budgets in the next section, so I'm going to quickly share with you those increases. One has to do with IT, I'm sure we can all imagine that there are going to be some one-time expenditures in IT for, in an effort to mitigate those cybersecurity attacks, so that's one of the reasons. Building maintenance as well, our buildings are old, there's a lot of upgrades and remodels and AC units and roofs needing repairs, we put that on hold, for the most part, in '21, and so we've got almost $400,000 set aside to take care of some of that. Additionally, we added a person, too. And then also, in our fleet services, we've added two people, and we have a large pieces of equipment that's part of our capital that is also going to be recommended to be spent this year. So those identify the reasons for those three services, those three internal services budgets going up. And general fund is the largest, the largest fund that houses most of our divisions, and so clearly, there's going to be a large increase in our internal services, not quite yet. PSPRS unfunded liability, you'll see the debt issuance there. And then I want to point out, that very last arrow is a huge increase over years, but some exciting news that we get to share, there's a large outgoing transfers, multiple transfers, that comprise that $21.8 million in interfund transfers that Mr. Foggan will talk about after this next slide. At the end of the day, we expect to end up with a fund balance in the general fund at the end of '22, at $29.9 million, that falls within the 25% to 50% fund balance policy at just over 49%.
All right, some highlights.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
On the previous slide, with the revenue source of the debt financing at 38,755, the debt issuance, and then the expenditure, 34,036, is there, is that contingency that was the difference?
That contingency reserve fund that you adopted, yes.
So it's reserved in case we had any surprises.
Yep, restricted monies, it can only be used towards the unfunded liability that may occur in the future as we're paying this down.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, is, we get closer to paying that off, that money will more than likely be used to finish paying the debt, which is a great little buffer, and come 2036, '35, '36, and '37, it's a good chance that the city won't be having to come up with any additional money for that, and it'll be paid off, you know, basically be, you know, it'll be paid off by them, so.
Thank you.
Very goodness, thank you. All right, highlights, yeah, yes. Yep. Okay. Just while Annie works on that, we'll, as soon as we finish kind of this budget oversight, overview, we'll take a five-minute break, let everybody kind of stretch their legs, so that before we enter the operating budget section, you feel like you can take a breath.
Ron, I do have a question.
You need to use your microphone.
It's on, I'm sorry.
Okay, yep.
Yes, sir.
I know, if I was listening closely, you said 1.7 cost of living adjustment, and you said 2021, but is that for 20 fiscal, that's starting January 2022 or 2021?
So the raise, the 3% raise will start at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July 1st.
Correct.
And then the cost of living will be January 1st.
But that was for 20, so it started back in January?
Next, 22.
Next, okay, 2022, because I think you did say 21.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
So that, I was wondering, which...
Yep, sorry, sorry.
No, no, but that's, it's great, I mean, I can see it happening, but I was, I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, clarification is, the 3% will be in 2021, July, and January 2022 will be cost of living, sorry about that.
I mean, I was sort of hoping that we could have got it for 2021, also.
Yeah, well, it's not budgeted, so that's the problem.
Correct.
I would have loved to have done it, too.
Thanks.
Yep, good question. All right, we're good, Annie? Okay, great. So some of the highlights, of course, we will talk about this, these things in more detail, but just as overview, the general fund outgoing transfers that Tina referred to is, we're going to put $3 million to the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway TI project, $2.5 million to street maintenance, and moving forward, that's, we can do $2 million in '23 through '26. The thing that I'll point out to the council on this is that's not sustainable over time, so don't, don't plan on us taking care of our street maintenance only with this money. We're still going to need a revenue source, an additional revenue source, we need to be spending approximately somewhere in the area of $5 to $6 million a year on street maintenance, and this will put us well above where we've been in the past, but it still leaves us way short, so I want to make sure that that gets bookmarked in your mind as we continue to want to talk about funding for street maintenance. Also, $1.6 million in construction sales tax is being dedicated to capital projects. Reminder, this is one-time revenue, so we don't want to wrap that into ongoing expenditures, so the appropriate place is to try to cover where we can, one-time capital projects. Then we have $8.4 million to the downtown streetscape, the Sunbelt Sports Park, and Electric Car Museum project. And then, following years, there'll be another $7.4 million to take care of the rest of these projects, as we look to spend the first and second distributions of our American Rescue Plan money. And then finally, yeah, yes, please.
With respect to that, if the second estimates that reduced us by a couple of million come through, when, with the American Rescue Plan, will this just go down by that amount?
So our plan will be to just ask the council to spend the additional $2 million out of reserves.
Okay.
To finish these projects.
Okay.
We feel like they're that important.
I agree, thank you.
Yep. But we are, just for the record, we are going to continue to fight for our $7.4 million. We think that the metropolitan city definition has been used improperly or incorrectly, and we actually got news today that the senators, our Arizona senators, have set up a meeting with the Treasury Department for us to come to the table and talk about that metropolitan city designation, because how they came to that conclusion, when any city under the, basically under $50,000, is not considered a metropolitan city, and to lump us into that is not appropriate. I think where the confusion comes in is that the cities, the tri-cities, a long time ago got together and agreed to share their CDBG money, and one year, Lake Havasu gets it, the next year, Bullhead and Kingman get it. And so, because that's the way CDBG has been distributed, the Treasury Department then defined all three cities under the metropolitan city definition, and that's where the confusion is coming, and we hope to be able to correct that with the state, or the Fed folks on their definition of metropolitan cities, so. And then finally, one of the things, we just wrapped up, as most of you know, we did a Parks Master Plan, and in doing that, the stakeholders that came to our stakeholder meetings, and in the Parks Master Plan, Recreation Community Center was talked about a lot, number-one priority for most people that came and took our surveys as well. And so, in an effort to increase livability and to recognize that, we are putting money to, recommended, putting money towards our, basically a recreation facility or a community center, it'll be both. So we'll be talking about that more as we move forward through these discussions. All right.
All right, moving on to the HERF fund highlights, a couple of areas here, you'll see that I had shared that the state is projecting HERF revenues to be down, we are also projecting that in the HERF budget. I do want to point out the local sales tax line item, so that is our additional 1% that we impose on restaurants and bars. You'll see that it looks like it's a decline from '21, and it is. However, in fiscal year '21, we actually received a one-time large payment from a merchant who was not paying the 1% additional for some time, and so they came, they made that delinquency current. And so, although that looks like an outstanding number for fiscal year '21, if we pulled that back, it would be closer in line with the fiscal year '22 number, so. So just wanted to, to point that out. And then you'll see the interfund transfers coming in have increased by about $2.5 million, and that's for the street maintenance from the general fund. And then their, their supplies and services in the expenditures down below increased, and that is solely related to the $2.5 million additional monies that will be spent on pavement preservation. And so that's the HERF fund highlights. As far as the fund balance, yep, you're good, yeah. Fund balance is concerned, we expect to end up at about $2.9 million at the end of fiscal year '22. All right, and real quickly, going over the rest of the enterprise funds and the internal service funds, just to share what to expect in this upcoming year. We have been undergoing a water rate study since 2018. Those of you that have been on the council that long are aware of that. And in 2020, we were, we were ready to bring a recommended rate increase or revenue increase to the council. Because of the pandemic, we did not want to, we didn't, we didn't want to impose anything on local businesses. And so we are ready to come back to the table with that. However, there's going to be some updating to do. We have another year of data that has, that has gone behind us, and so we need to update our financial model for that. But expect that to come to, to muck, and then to the council sometime in the early fall, maybe the late summer. And as far as the five-year forecast for water, we are including a rate increase in the out years, fiscal year '23 through '26. Waste water, a few years ago, the council adopted a sewer connection assistance program and funded $50,000 towards that. We have had six customers take advantage of that. None of them are in default. All of them are paying their bills, and all of them have expressed gratitude for that program and have shared how great it's been to work with the city, the engineering department, and the contractors that we're using as well. So it's been a, it's been a good program for the few that have, have tapped into it. And we are recommending a rate study in fiscal year '22, and really just to reevaluate cost of service and ensure that the right, the right users are being assessed the right charges, kind of what we've done with solid waste and what we're planning on doing with water as well. Solid waste, exciting that we get to implement our 10-year truck replacement program. So we are recommending that six vehicles be leased this upcoming year, and that we will continue to evaluate market conditions for the recycling program. Stormwater rate study will be coming to you in the late summer, early, early fall as well. The consultant has all of the information. As soon as he puts together a recommended rate, then we will sit, city staff will sit down with him and then put something together and make a recommendation and go through the, the necessary channels. Airport, just to share that what we did last year, we plan on doing this year with our land sales, and that is using those monies, those one-time monies for one-time grant matches for all of the grants that Joe Husband and his team and Steve Pryor have been able to solidify over the last few years. And then I did already talk about internal services, but I do want to point out insurance services, that's one of the internal service programs. Exciting that we are going to implement a safety award program actually this year to the tune of $162,000. I don't know if you wanted to share on that anymore?
So one of the things that I have concentrated on and have considered to be our top, my top priority for our employees and for the city organization as a whole is safety. And one of the things that I've told the employees is when you're safe and we're not paying out workers' comp claims and we're not paying out liability claims, that's money that could be used back within the city in helping to pay employees and recognize employees. So last year, we are, so what they look at on, on your insurance rates is your mod. How much should you pay in versus how much should you pay out? And your mod is based on a one or 100%. And so anything, when your mod, when you have accidents, when you have, you know, when you're at fault at accidents, or you have workers' comp things, those, those of course cost us money, and the price goes up. When you don't have accidents, you pay less, you pay in, but you didn't have as much come out. So this year, we got a refund check for, from our liability insurance of $152,000. And so is promised to the employees, if you're safe and you're not causing accidents and damage to city vehicles and property, and other people's vehicles and property, then we can give that back to the employees. So we have a safety bonus program that we've put into the budget, and it will basically recognize that the safety efforts of all the full-time employees. For those field employees, it will mean more money. And for the desk office employees, they still have a part to play in the safety of our organization, and they'll get a smaller recognition because it takes all of us to be safe. I am really excited about it. The amount of accidents and the number of safety conversations that are happening within our organization are super exciting, and I'm, I'm just really pleased with what the team is doing with that. So, thank you. Five-minute break. I should note that puts us back here at 2:31. Hope everybody's break was good as we enter the operating budgets. A little information about the operating budgets, just I'll call it housekeeping. One of the things that we, that we do with our departments is as they build their operating budgets, we ask them if there's a line item or a section of their budget that's going to be greater than 10%, that they provide explanations for those increases so that when we get to the point where we're sharing this with y'all, that we can make sure and highlight those. And so we, I will be doing that as we go through. I will say that on these operating budgets, what I'm not going to spend time on is the internal service funds, those Tina talked about, IT, fleet, building maintenance. Those have a variety of different percentage increases to those departments, but it's pretty much going to be the same across the board as far as what's happening in those internal service funds, which we will also talk about. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on there. And then also, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on personnel, other than to point out or re-point out that the departments that have reclassifications or new employees being added. And I will point out that we did, we have done a lot of reclassification work this year that you will, that you will see in the budgets. And where there's not a huge amount of change in budgets, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on. So unless you have questions about them, do not be offended if I say there's not any changes and we're moving on to the next one. So, because this is definitely a large part of this presentation, and we want to make sure to get, get your questions and, and your input as much as we possibly can. And spending a lot of time on a, on a budget that's, that's not changing very much doesn't make a lot of sense, so. All right, let's get started. The first budget that we have is your budget. And so the city council's budget actually has a decrease in it. And I guess I should point out that we've, in an effort to, I'll say, clean up the budget and be a little bit more transparent, we have moved expenditures to where they seem more appropriate. And so in the council's budget, we have some personnel cost increases just due to the stipend increase that you all accepted last year, that is now being fully realized by all the council. And then we have, the, the decrease is a result of, for some reason, the council was paying for the 4th of July fireworks. Don't, don't know why, but that's been reclassified. And then also employee recognition has been, I believe, moved to my budget in, in an effort to kind of show that be more realistic, that, so that I can be responsible and babysit those, or my, my portion of it anyway. And then, of course, there's the internal services increase. My budget is, overall, has a 10.4% increase. It's really due to the fact, under supplies and services, that we're going to get back to surveying the citizens, which I love doing. Where also, I mentioned the employee recognition program was moved to my budget. And also working on some wellness programs with my employees, trying to basically have people be healthier and use less of our, our health benefits is our hope. And then internal revenue services, under the city attorney, yes?
One comment.
Yes, please.
I spent a lot of time going through this yesterday. I really love seeing the strategic plan focus areas added. That's new this year, and I don't know, I, I was excited to see it, and then it really helps you get a better look at each department.
Yep.
And anyway, kudos. Thank you very much.
And I, I got a call, I've got a call timeout right there, thank you. Counselor, I appreciate it. I need to recognize Tina and Melissa for the amazing work that they've done to compile this and put together just an incredible document. I, I'm blown away by the improvements that we make, and we've been able to make every year for the last three years. And I, it's Tina and her leadership, and Melissa and her willingness to go that, that next step of improvement. So I appreciate that. I failed to start the meeting with that, and thank you ladies for that. You really have done a great job, so, thank you.
And I, I would just like to add that that's why it's so nice to have this book.
Yeah.
Because it's much easier to just pop it open, and you can find things quickly and relate them. People ask about the budget, and this will help, it's so helpful. And so thank you for this, and it is well done, just very well done.
And I would point out that this is internationally recognized award document, or it will be. The last, the last few have been, been recognized by the Government Finance Office Association as an exceptional budget document, as a communication tool and as a financial tool, so. Good job.
Very good job.
Thank you. All right. City attorney, the city attorney's budget is really up with regards in the supplies and services due to, they've, they're, they're getting criminal case management software that they desperately need. And then the internal services, again, I'm not going to spend any time on that. When we get to those funds, we'll talk about why you're seeing these different increases there. This is Annie's budget, and there's not really very much to say, other than it's a huge reduction in the fact that it's an off-election year, and so she doesn't spend as much money in the off-election years, so. She's doing a great job. Under the courts, they're, have an increase of 8.7%. They are really not seeing any large increases anywhere in their budget, other than the internal services. Again, I guess it's probably worth pointing out that a lot of, a lot of times, the departments were paying or budgeting for their own building improvements or building maintenance items. And that has all been taken and put into the building maintenance budget so that we can see that, instead of having it spread throughout the organization. We, this gives us the ability to manage that better, to cost compare better, and to really know that nobody is falling behind in building maintenance. And I've got a couple of stories I'll share when we get to building maintenance and some of the projects that they're going to be tackling that were shocking, that as the building maintenance folks geared up to take over these, these projects, that stuff that had been ignored or done is going to be addressed happily and was alarming at the very same time. So we, we will be spending some more time with that. All right. Economic development. So economic development, they have been doing a fantastic job over the last year. We've wrapped up a couple of, of big projects. The Vista Program wrapped up. We have We have, we had, as you recall, an effort, a pretty big effort to put money towards our businesses that were hurting during the pandemic. So we've added a whole bunch of extra money in there. There is, that has resulted in a in a reduction. We still will be doing facade, the facade program. I don't suspect we'll see too much more in the parklets as we look to our downtown streetscape instead. But facade work, we're hoping will continue. And then the large, I, yes?
That was something I had on my notes and I and I did see in here that we talked about reducing the the parklet program.
Yeah, is your is your mic on?
It is.
Okay. I just can't hear any speakers.
Can we just go ahead and put the parklet money into the facade and zero out that? Because I, we had talked about early on, these parklets being temporary and going away. And now they're being built so large, I wouldn't want to see us investing anymore or the owners investing in them when they're going to disappear.
We've talked about that and we've actually called a timeout on all parklets, especially if they're within the three, between the Third and Fifth Street area because that is what we're proposing for Phase One of the streetscape. If there's something outside of that, we'll probably we'll probably look at it. But you're absolutely right and that has that has come up and we've we've had to tell some businesses we're calling timeout because we've we've got this streetscape project that's going to replace all of these and be much better for the businesses and anybody visiting the downtown.
Right. I've had a lot of people ask me about them and they seem surprised when they find out that that was just a temporary fix until the beautification process happened.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm, yeah, I was glad to see that that was sort of addressed, but I would rather just have it go to the facade program.
Yeah, we want to see more facade work for sure. And that's what we're, I know Sylvia and Gary, that's what they're out promoting is let's let's get some more facade work done. So, totally agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I wanted to point out, I know I wasn't going to talk too much about internal services, but you'll see a huge increase in internal services on the ED team. With the transition of the airport going under Public Works, the ED team now has to pay for their space at the airport. So that that accounts for a much bigger increase for them moving forward. But we don't mind because everything seems to be working really well together on that. All right. So tourism has a large increase, I think, in the highlights. I pointed out our effort that we're making in trying to get tourism, our tourism economy back and actually better than it's ever been. So I mentioned the full-time administrative assistant that will take Josh away from the desk and doing what we need him to be doing. And then we're going to do some more additional marketing and data analysis. Something that we found through the pandemic is that looking at the numbers and working with the numbers was really beneficial. So we're going to continue to to look and see how we can manipulate those and use them to our advantage. And then the, one of the the bigger things that we're going to take on, it's happening right now, is the drive-through shield. We're excited to add that to the to the powerhouse parking lot. It's being constructed right now. If you've if you've been by, you've seen the posts going up and the sign folks are doing their thing. So we're we're pretty excited about the drive-through shield and being able to get people to pull off and spend some time there. And hopefully, they'll discover our downtown through some additional pamphlets and brochures and advertising that we're doing with billboards and other marketing materials. Engineering. Engineering has a 15.3% increase. They they've had some fairly big changes within their department with the retirement of Greg. And we're currently searching for an assistant city engineer and being very picky about that because we would definitely want someone who is a good fit for our team and has amazing, is going to be an amazing team player. And then with our services and supplies, you'll see a really large increase. And that is, for the time being, we are contracting out some of our services for project management and plans examiner duties until those positions are filled. That's working and will work on a temporary basis and something that that is not as convenient as having someone at a desk, but has is is working currently. And again, we hope to have these positions filled. And at the end of 2022, my hope is that you and that we end up seeing the supplies and services actually drop back down and our personnel will reflect more of what we hope is happening for our long-term fix for engineering. And then internal services is just what it is. They don't have any major projects in their for their building, as I recall. So that's what we're doing with engineering. Miss Tina's budget. So the finance department is, has a number of changes that they're making in their personnel classifications. And so they're doing some regrading of their their positions. We've traditionally had a senior accountant and an accountant position. And as Tina has evaluated her team and what people are being asked to do, was determined after the retirement of our senior accountant that what we really needed was two accountants. This actually results in a cost savings to her department and will provide her with with two people that can share the the work instead of one person that's doing kind of the heavy lifting and one person that's doing all the easy stuff. And so, and then under utility billing, kind of sharing the cost for business licenses. Happy to report that business licenses are strong and there's work to be done there. And then under, the big increase under supplies and services is just a large increase in our bank account fees. And in, and then one of the things that we probably will be doing in upcoming year or so is evaluating and probably doing an RFP for banking services just to make sure that we are getting the best deal. We think we are getting a good deal right now, but we're going to double-check that. And then finally, we have, I want to point out that there's about $23,000 project that's going to result in a piece of software or I should say a platform that we've started with. And that is our, that's our reporting, our reporting system. We haven't, oh, we haven't purchased, yeah, okay. So this this should help us with with people who want to know more about our finances to be able to to come online and look at all of them and feel like they have access and knowledge of what's happening with our finances. So it's it's really trying to break through that communication piece with our citizens and frankly, anybody who wants to know more about our finances. So, pretty excited about that program, actually. The other department that Tina oversees is utility billing and licensing. Slight increase here. Really, it it has pretty much all to do with the internal services charges. Again, a little bit of reclassification, as mentioned, from the from finance on dealing with the utility billing versus business licensing. Okay, fire administration and stations. You're going to see a a large decrease. We have not defunded the fire department. We have taken care of PSPRS. So that's what equates to the decrease. What we did do this year, what Tina and team did was that we used to have two separate departments that were reported. And we were doing fire admin and buildings or stations separately. And in an effort to be a little bit more transparent and not spread those out across different pages, we are now, they're now one one unit, which I think makes a lot of sense. And so Tina's brought those together. The supplies and services is, has a large increase in it. There is a number of of things that are being done within the fire department that are felt to be really important. There's new and expanded training programs that that the fire department's looking to use. We have some new requirements for uniforms and protective clothing. And with the addition of two new firefighters, that of course, cost goes up for those people. You have to buy them. It's not like you can use old, used pair. All of that has to get replaced with brand-new. And then, of course, every couple of years, your requirements to replace hoses and nozzles happens and this happens to be one of those years. As far as capital outlay is concerned, they have a replacement needed for their cardiac monitoring and their thermo-imaging cameras, which are all very expensive items. You know, the, for us, if we went to buy these things, they're they're $100. When the, as soon as you attach fire department to them, they're $1,000. So, but they're, these, all these things are very important for for their success. This is just what the numbers look like for them. Again, you can see the large drop-off and that's really the PSPRS unfunded liability going away. And so, moving forward, we we will have a much more stable budget to to basically work from, not having to kind of guess what the unfunded liability payment was going to be. So we're we're, if, it sounds like we're pleased about that. We couldn't be more pleased. All right, community development, AKA Building Inspection Department. And this has, this department has reclassifications in it where we're having the admin assistant being reclassified to an administrative assistant, too. And I pointed out, the full-time building and life safety inspector is being added. And one of the things that we're, we've been working on in a lot of our departments, and I think I should just take a timeout and say it here, is that any place where there's an opportunity to be cross-trained or have cross-training, we're we're trying to take advantage of that. And in, this is one of those areas where it's, this position's listed as building and life safety inspector. And we we're, we're, we try to be as efficient and effective as we possibly can. And so our building and life safety inspectors will also be plans examining, our building plans reviewers. And that will give us the coverage that we need out in the field as well as that extra help at the desk to review plans. So we're excited to be able to add this position because as you, as Tina pointed out, growth has been outstanding out in the community for residential and commercial growth has been way up and we expect it to continue to be strong. Having another person to help with that and building plans review is is going to be needed as well. And not too much to add beyond they're just going to replace a vehicle, needed. Our dispatch center, I've pointed out already that we're going to be adding a full-time telecommunicator just due to the call volume. And and then one of the things that we're excited to be adding is the the fact that our computer-aided dispatch system is being replaced and there's going to be a huge cost savings in supplies and services. Of course, there's the other, that other shoe will drop when you have to, when we make the payment for priority dispatch and computer-aided system as we move forward. So, that's dispatch. HR and risk management. The first section of this is the HR department. HR has got a 24.2% increase. They are going to be adding an administrative assistant. They have been, they've been short people for over, now over a year, trying to fill a position. We'd filled it with an amazing employee who, after two weeks in the position, had a personal life issue come up and had to move back to the state that they had moved here from. And so we've not been able to fill that position. But as part of the structuring of our HR department, administrative assistant is desperately needed. So we've added that. And then the rest of the increase is is due to the internal services of the of the department. The second part of Krista's budget is risk management. And as was pointed out, we have, we've put a lot of effort into wanting to recognize and pushing safety. So there's a lot of focus on on this specific area. And in supplies and services, it it has decreased, but it's, that's really due to a realignment of services. And then their increase is again resulting in the internal services. And with the administrative assistant that's being added in HR, we're also, that that will also be of benefit to the risk side of what we're doing as well. All right, information technology. As Tina pointed out, there's some pretty big changes in our IT division. And it starts with reclassification item, our personnel items in our, in the personnel line items. And so, reclassifying, we, what we discovered through the cyber attack is that our people have brought more talents than we were actually requesting or requiring in, when we, when they were originally hired. But because of the cyber attack and the extra requirements that we're now going through, they're going to have to bring, all of our team that have, they've all got the skills, are are going to have to bring those additional skills to the table. So if you were hired to be a help desk and systems employee, you're also going to have to be, use some of your skill set to be part of the network team. And so that you're going to see in in their personnel line items. And then, of course, services and supplies, we're paying, we're going to pay for additional monitoring, like minute-by-minute monitoring, which is working, starting to become the best practice across the United States. So there's a, you're, we're seeing a large increase there as well as probably the biggest increase is that departments were purchasing computers and things like that. IT is now going to manage that piece. It's kind of like the building maintenance where people were taking care of their own building maintenance. That's now going to be housed in IT where we can track that and follow it much more closely and we can know what computers are where and they're identified instead of just being haphazardly purchased. So we're we're, we're happy about that change. And then, of course, they have a fairly large capital outlay increase for one-time computer equipment that will help us address our cyber security, any cybersecurity threats. Hats off to Joe, yes, please. You're on.
Just a question.
Just a question. Is there any merit for IT to have a rotation program, kind of a standard rotation program for computers, for staff? Just, I know in the past, I've been in organizations where every three or four years, they would just automatically upgrade computers. And that way, technology stayed current, and you don't have to worry about whether your systems are going to handle all the new demands.
So, I wouldn't say, our, our focus has been on the software side, rather than on the peripheral or the hard, hardware side. And if, basically, what the IT department has done is, if you have departments or you have personnel that have specific needs for faster computers, GIS mapping is very heavy-duty computer. You need really solid, big computers to do those. As those get, as the technology advances and they get slower or not able to handle it, those computers, bless you, those computers are actually reworked and handed down because they're still fast enough to take care of office duties and that kind of thing. The real focus for the team has been on the software side and making sure that software licensing and software itself is getting the proper security updates. And that's where their focus has been and will continue to be. And that's frankly, the cost, some of the larger costs are on the software side, rather than the hardware side. And so, that's where the focus will continue to be. They will change out computers, on individual computers, as they, as they fail, or as they become too slow or unable to run the current programs that the users at that station need. So, for most of us that are using email and Word and Excel, you know, there's, there's, as long as our software is up to date, our system is, for the most part, going to be safe. It's going to be, you, you've heard of, of, I know, communities, cities, that were running, you know, Windows XP when they should have been running Windows 2013 or whatever, and it wasn't supported anymore. And it's those unsupported software packages that you end up getting in trouble with. And so, the focus will continue to be on how, password, and who gets access to the network, as well as making sure all software is up to date.
Thank you.
All right. Recreation. Recreation, really, where you're going to see some of the bigger hits from our increase in minimum wage are where we have part-time, the most part-time employees, and that's parks and recreation. And so, you know, we've got basically a $35,000 increase to their budget, just based on the minimum wage requirements. So, that's, that's a pretty big increase. As far as the rest of their budget, it's, they've actually got a decrease because of their recreation spending. And it, we made an adjustment, they'd always had a big number in there and never reached it, so we just worked with them to make sure that it was more realistic, so.
And manager, what is the minimum wage at this point? Twelve point five?
Twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Pools, again, part-time wages. This equates to $47,000 increase in operating the pools is the minimum wage increase. We do have a large increase. We've got to do some pool deck repair, that's pretty important. And then, you know, pumps at pools are always, always being fixed or replaced, and in this case, it's time to replace a transfer pump, pump that's pretty pricey. And then, they're actually going to be doing some, some new vacuums. That doesn't sound like that big a deal, but they're pretty important to the cleanliness of our pools. And it, if they're working properly, it takes less part-time help. So, it's actually, it's, it's a purchase that will ultimately pay us back, so.
Manager Fagan?
Yes.
Before we go on, I wanted to just backtrack to that discussion on minimum wage.
Yes.
One discussion I know we've had, and I'd just like to have it considered in the future for enhancement, would be the incentive programs for people to upscale, because with the minimum wage being what it is, and we know that right now is a great opportunity for people to upscale and get better and better jobs. And there are pathways in the city that could be so, that are really good for career advancement.
Yep.
So, I, I think not at this time, but at some time, I'd like to have that discussion of the incentive programs and perhaps the consideration of further incentive program for upscaling, so that we make sure that the city is supporting that.
Yeah. And, yeah, we, we have, you know, one of the things that we have is basically an education reimbursement program. There's definitely opportunities for job advancement. When we bring in a person into an entry-level position, they're, the, the beauty of those positions are they get a foot in the door, they learn, start learning the system, and as much, Mike would, if he was here, would throw something at me. But one of the things that our, our entry-level employees do is they, they do pay attention to job postings and job requirements in like the water department and the sewer department, where there's, if you get advanced training certifications in water system management, there's opportunities there. So, I appreciate you bringing that up, because our, our hope is, and our, our plan for our employees, as many of you have heard me say, is we want to hire you and retire you. That, that is our goal. That means that we're finding ways to work you up into the organization. It may not be with the same department, but that we're giving employees opportunities to grow. So, you're, you're spot-on, and it's something that, that we talk about. And as, and with like Achieve 60, the Arizona Achieve 60 program, encouraging employees to, to basically get some kind of certification and/or education, it makes them stronger candidates for those mid-level.
Exactly.
And we're really looking to develop our next set of leaders as well, so.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Golf course. The golf course has a number of reclassifications of positions being, that are being proposed. We have some folks that have been great additions to the team, that brought extra skills and have learned some additional skills that have made them, really qualified them to be increased in grade. And so, we want to recognize that work with our irrigation folks. It's, it's a, it's a complex system. It's not just a matter of, of edging and mowing and turning on the sprinklers anymore. There's a lot to it. And so, you'll see that, that's being recognized. There's some equipment operators that are being reclassed. And then, one of the things that, just after Tina and Krista and I met, we had entry-level positions at two, at grade 202. Grade 202, if we hired you at the beginning step of, or no, we don't have steps, the begin, the minimum of grade 202 would be below minimum wage. So, we just basically chopped every, the 202 classification and made, and pushed everybody into 203, so that everybody will start above minimum wage. So, happy to be doing that as well. And then, the golf course has a few part-time employees as well, so the minimum wage will affect them on the part-time folks as well. And then, they have the big, I think the big thing to point out at the golf course is it's time to replace our golf carts. They are tired, and we've got a good price, so we will enter into a five-year capital lease to replace our golf carts. Pretty standard, best-practice approach. And then, finally, we've got two T-mowers that we, that we need to replace. Keeping up on the, on mowers and the golf course equipment is pretty important, because when these, when these pieces of equipment fail, the results are really damaged parts of your golf course. And you have a hydraulic leak of, on your greens, and you can see that for a year, because it just kills, creates a line that basically is a dead part of your greens. So, we're trying to avoid that at all costs. And of course, keeping the course groomed and looking amazing is, 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 is super-important for those that visit and those that use it on a daily basis. Mike's parks budget is, reflects a 13.2% increase. Again, with the golf course, the parks has some reclassification to recognize the irrigation techs and people who are really good at using the equipment. And then, again, back to that grade 202 being dissolved and everybody moving to grade 203. And then, as far as their capital is concerned, they have just a, a number of, of capital items. The one that I want to point out as, I'll say livability, specific livability, is the firefighters' park restrooms are desperately need to be repaired and the grounds around that, as well as the existing community center needs, needs some air conditioning. It is heavily used, and we don't want it to be a sweatbox, so we're going to work on the air conditioning units there. All right. Police department. There, this is not a defunding effort, just let me take that out of everybody's vocabulary. This, of course, this decrease is reflective of our PSPRS efforts. As part of, we've covered their, their employee requests, so they have the, the magnet position that does not come out of our funds. And then, they have a couple of reclassifications of their support staff, which I think is really been needed. And then, adding another administrative assistant will help them in their accreditation and day-to-day operations with reports. Under their, they, as you can guess, we cut a lot of travel and training. We didn't do any travel and training last year, because no one was traveling. Of course, we need to get back to making sure that our folks are being trained appropriately. And then, the final piece of that is that where we were enjoying $2 gallon gas, you'll see that reflected in a number of these heavier vehicle-type budgets, that we're, we've taken into account the fuel price increase to the $3 range, instead of $2. And then, a pretty important project that they're, they're going to tackle is their electronic key management system, so that when it's time during an emergency, they know where the keys are and they're accounted for. Sounds like a really simple thing, but it has caused a great amount of angst for the department. So, Chief Cooper and his team were basically trying to tackle this, this item and found a system that will require login and log-out of keys. They have a number of vehicles, including all of their units, as people transition in and out, that are, they will require them to get a key and put it back. And now, we'll make sure to make, that there'll be a system in place that accounts for, George checked out the key, George checked it back in, or George didn't check it back in. Now, I don't know if we have an officer named George, so I'm not picking on anybody. But, so that, that will be a pretty important system moving forward for them. They also, they're also involved in the, getting a new software system that will provide much better data and dispatching that they absolutely desperately need, and we're excited. So, that system will affect dispatch, it will affect fire and, and police. And we're excited to be working on that, and it'll make the data and the performance measurements that we're currently working on that much, that much better. And so, we're, we're excited to have, have that come on as well.
Ron?
Yes, ma'am.
Go forward.
Yes.
One problem that we've seen in the police department since before I was elected in my first term was a lot of turnover, and some of that was contributed to pay, people going elsewhere for higher pay.
Yep.
And I know that, I think it was about two years ago, that we had a lot of openings. And I'm, I'm wondering, how many openings do we have now, and if we've really been able to address all of those compression issues and, I mean, just, I know that there was a lot, it wasn't just a standard rate of pay, but it was in every position, problems, so.
Yeah, so, we've been able, for the most part, to get our arms around the compression issue. And two years ago, we, we finally introduced pay increases. And as part of those pay increases, we also went through a salary study and got, were able, we, we ripped out the step and grade system and put in a minimum, maximum, and a midpoint, where the, all the departments can hire, if you, prior to, two years ago, the police department was really unable to go out and attract outside officers, because when they brought them in, they got put at this level, they couldn't show them any type of increase or, or way of, of giving larger salaries. They had no ability to bring someone in and say, "Well, you have 15 years, so you should be able to start here," versus, you know, everybody was on, was being brought in at the same level. The new pay system allows the department to recognize years of service, and they can now hire someone at midpoint or above midpoint, or just below midpoint. You know, they have that flexibility now. I will say that we're still fighting. The state pays
A lot.
A gazillion dollars more than we do.
Yeah.
And we can't compete with it. There's just no way for us to compete with it. I mean, it's, it, they're, they're giving hiring bonuses and paying, starting people $10,000 higher than, than we are. And the, you know, the state wants to give tax cuts, and I don't know how they, that's sustainable, but I guess they figured it out. We just don't have that revenue source, but I would, I would say that we're competitive. We are attracting people to the profession, which, you know, through the last year and a half, is, or at least last year, has been really hard to do. Right now, we have, I think, three people in the academy, or set to go in the academy. We have officers that have left for different reasons. Some to go work for the state, you know, one or two to go work for the state, one or two because they had to move to a different state. I would, I don't know the, the number that we're currently down, I want to say it's four, that we're down.
So, that's a lot better than it was at one point.
Yeah, well, the, you remember that we, we were out advertising and trying to hire people, that we were lucky if we put one person in the academy?
Yes.
And now, we're, we're, we're attracting people and putting, you know, and it, it also helps that we're, we're using two academies now, instead of just one. We have the academy that we, we participate in the tri-city area with, and we're also in the Yuma Academy. So, we can have candidates in the academy throughout the entire year, instead of having to wait, which is really great, because who can put their life on hold for three or four or six months?
Right.
Until the next academy starts? This is really, this, being able to participate in the Yuma Academy has really made a difference in being able to fill more positions in a, in a quick manner. But I would say, as far as turnover, there's still turnover. But again, competing with the state is not something that we can do. I mean, there, it's a different work, and we're trying to create a workplace that's enjoyable and that, that people and that, that people can, can be successful. And we've, I think we've created that and we're going to continue to work on that. But we are finding people that are interested in the profession, which prior was not, was, it was hard to get a few people to show up just to the hiring process. Now we're, we're getting twenty, thirty people coming to the hiring process, going through the testing, both the mental testing and the physical testing, and coming out with some really good candidates, so. But yeah, the compression issue, I think, for the most part, has been taken care of. And the system now allows us to address those easier, so.
Okay, thank you.
Manager Fagan, is there any discussion of bringing back the youth program? There was a summer youth program for, for the police department, the police cadet program?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Junior police, that's it.
So the last, the, the most recent step that Chief Cooper took was to put our school resource officer program back into place. And I guess that's a great question and I'll, Evan or is it, who's on the, who's on? Oh, Rusty is too. Chief, what, what do you have to say about the junior police academy, or program? Go ahead, Evan.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. We got you.
All right, I'm on, okay. So yeah, we had to cancel our junior police academy last year because of COVID. Different restrictions with the school district, but this year, so that would, that's two years in a row we haven't had that. This will be our first year back. We have that in the process right now. And it's going to be starting in June. We're going to do one session and we're hoping to continue on next summer as well and do two more sessions to get back on track.
Thank you, Chief. That's, I'm really glad to hear that. It's a great program.
I think the chief had told me that and I just spaced it, so. Thanks, thanks, Chief Cooper. Appreciate that. All right, did I get to the bottom? Oh, yeah, I got to the bottom of police. All right, let's do one more and then take a break. How's that sound? Public Works Streets Administration. So we have, for the Public Works Street Administration, we have a large increase in supplies and services. And that's really asset maintenance program to the streets operation budget. So again, in a cleanup, that decrease is really the result of us moving basically a line item or expenditures to, to the streets department where it belongs. And then they have, they're, really their, their increase that you're seeing at the top is a result of the internal services increase of the one hundred and forty-one percent. And they're playing a, they're, they're playing a much bigger role in all three of those categories of insurance and information technology and in, in fleet, oh, and buildings also, so. Not a lot of changes there, other than the movement of that asset management program to the operating budget of the streets. And with that, let's take five minutes. It puts us back here at, let's take six minutes, three thirty. That was a much-needed break. Thank you. All right, street operations. So street operations, wow, eighty-two point two percent increase. This is our biggest increase of the budget. And already talked about the full-time sign and a marking technician. That does not add up to much of an increase. We will talk about that. But then we also have a reclassification. Oh, we don't have a, is there a, I thought there was, not in streets, okay. So it is the, the sign and marking technician for their, for their team. The big, the big point in this budget, of course, is the two point five million dollars for street maintenance. That two point five million is part of what we've been able to save over the years. And as I indicated, moving forward for the next five years, so it'll be two point five this year and two million for the next four years that we can put towards street maintenance. Again, that doesn't take us out of the woods. It's a nice, it's a nice improvement. And that, we will be adding, before anybody can ask, that will be the one point two million that we're currently planning on spending will be added to that. So the streets maintenance program will actually be at three point seven million total. And so looking forward to what we can, what we can do for pavement management this next year and then in the upcoming years. Again, even at three point seven million, that still leaves us about two million dollars short of what we should be spending on street maintenance. So we cannot stop the conversation about revenue and what we're going to do with street maintenance. And we, we plan on continuing that conversation. And I will tell you, based on our conversations and at the retreat, our effort is going to be to bring and have the community educated about this issue and to have you be able to consider something next year as far as something for the, the community to vote on for some kind of increase in sales tax. We're really hoping that citizens catch on to this and kind of demand to, to have that happen is the ultimate, the ultimate win for the street maintenance is to have the citizens champion the efforts that we've all been talking about. And there has been some conversations, that there has been some citizen groups that are interested in what we're going to do with street maintenance and maybe willing to put their names to support or even require the city council to, to put it on the ballot, which would be awesome.
Manager Fagan, when would that decision need to be made by council as to go or no go on that ballot measure?
So basically, if I go back to the last ballot measure that we had, which is our base rate discussion, we would need to have that in place and ready to move forward March of twenty twenty-two.
Excellent. Now, does that three point seven million, is that all for pavement preservation? Or does, for the, in that, so the administration and the personnel is?
Separate.
Separate?
Yeah.
That's good. Great, great advance.
And so the other piece, the other exciting news to this is that we've also budgeted, as I think all of you recognize, we've been working on Route sixty-six and making sure that that is welcoming and the, and the drive-in and part of people's experience in visiting our, our historic Route sixty-six. Well, we've basically revitalized Route sixty-six to Fourth Street. And so in this, in twenty twenty-two, we are also going to tackle the rest of Route sixty-six to the Beal, what I refer to as the Beal Y. I don't know what it's really referred to as, but we're going to take it from fourth to where it meets Beal, which is much, much needed. And we actually feel like that will be an important part of our efforts to attract people to come and be part of the experience of Route sixty-six and our, you know, our downtown and the visitor center and everything that is involved with Kingman. And finishing that project will basically have done all of Route sixty-six that is under our control. So we're pretty excited to be able to offer that as, also. So I thought, thought everybody would be excited about that. As, on top of that, we also have some unpaved streets, sidewalk replacement. A, a big important one to jack was that we improve our snow equipment operations. We've, we've had snow a couple of years in a row. This last one was, was not long, but it was impactful. And we, so adding a little bit of snow equipment is, is going to be tackled in this budget. And then we're going to make or improve our traffic signal system to add detection cameras, which are much more reliable and better than the detection systems that they put in the pavement, so that, that is going to be done. And then some intersection upgrades as part of their budget. So I think it's an exciting, it's going to be an exciting year or several years for the streets department to, to make strides and improve our livability as we drive around.
Does this budget always include funding for traffic studies and things of that nature?
When they're required, yes.
So that could be covered. I've, I've talked to so, several who have locations that may require.
So we just went through a multiple traffic study location. That's really how you notice the traffic pattern change at Route sixty-six and Stockton Hill Road that gives the ability to make a left-hand turn from the center lane to match what's happening coming west. Whatever that direction is. Okay, west. And that's been a real nice change. But that, those, those are tackled every couple of years or as needed, if we, if we notice that there's congestion happening or there's a request to look at it. Usually we, we contact our third-party traffic study partner and have them do that. But we just went through, I think we studied something like eight different intersections this last year.
Has there been a traffic study associated with Veterans Villas? Now that it's virtually, you know, it's almost full. And there, this would not be an intersection per se, but there's a lot of.
Wallapai Mountain Road?
Pardon?
Yeah, you're talking about the one that's off of Wallapai Mountain Road?
Yes, Veterans Villas. Just, if we don't need to talk about it right now, I just want to go on record as saying that's been requested for that, for that area. Because a lot of pedestrians are crossing there and, and also at the VA hospital. But, but bikes, people, and it's, you know, five lanes, so just.
Yeah.
I don't know if that would take a traffic study, but maybe it would take a pedestrian study. I don't, whatever. I just want, I wanted that on record because now that that's there, it's created a whole new community
Right.
of people who really. Of people who really walk a, a great deal, so, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, most of our traffic studies have to do with cars and trucks.
No, I, I, I just realized. I, but anyway, it's on the record and-
I drive that road a lot and there's people who do play Frogger, which I'd prefer they didn't do, so.
I know, I know. So, in fact, what was commented on was a really wonderful pedestrian walkway near our powerhouse, you know, I think something like that where if people are crossing. I too am concerned about all the people that I see-
Yeah.
Just taking their chances and it, it's apparently increasing.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I'll definitely talk to Rob and Jack about it. Yep. All right. Did I cover everything in this, in this one? All right. All right.
I have one quick question.
Yes, please.
In the last council meeting, you had talked about Jack bringing forth a document about which streets would be maintained. I'm going to primarily be the arterial roads and some of the connector roads.
Collectors.
And collector, sorry. And, and so, what I got from that was that a lot of the residential streets would be put on the back burner indefinitely until there was a revenue source. Is that correct?
Yeah, and so, that continued, continuing forward priority is going to be to take care of those heavier, heavy, you know, heavy traffic roads, because of course, those are the most costly to bring back up and to keep alive. So, that will continue to be the push. That additional funding is what will take care. That, when we talk about, you know, three-point-seven, that's awesome. And the number of arterial and collector and minor collectors that can be taken care of, you know, that, that's wonderful. But the residential roads don't get that checkbox until there's that additional, that additional revenue source for them.
So, if, if an additional half percent of sales tax isn't added, then we can expect that residential streets will continue to deteriorate then?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that message is, is, is crystal clear to people that that is the plan going forward.
Yep. And that, that will continue to be our focus, because again, keeping streets like Stockton, Airway, you know, you, you can think of them, right? All the, all the big, all the big ones-
Yeah, if there's a lot of miles.
Extremely expensive to keep them where they need to be. And, you know, a pothole or a deficiency in a street, in a residential street affects a few people. A deficiency in one of those bigger roads is something that the phone's going to ring constantly until it's repaired. So, recognizing that.
It'd be interesting to see if we couldn't get some kind of data on what the, you know, what your streets, how they impact your, the value of your home or your property. So, you know, if there, if there's some kind of study out there that talks about, you know, what, what the infrastructure is like in your neighborhood and how that affects values or how it affects sales, I'd love to see it.
Yeah, and it, there's, I'm cer- I'm sure there is. I have never seen it, but I'm sure there is. The one thing that I, I will say is, in, in discussing all of this with Jack and Rob, one of the things that we're going to push over the next year is some, some effort to do some street special service districts, special improvement districts, I should say, where if we can get, where people are living on dirt roads, if, if you can get those people to agree over a ten-year period to have their road at least paved, if not curb gutter and sidewalked as well, that it does improve the value of their homes and livability in that area goes up. And, and, you know, we have a number of streets in this community that are, that are not, I, I want to call them gravel, but they're not even gravel. They're just, they're dirt streets. We, we are grading them and maintaining them, but livability-wise, it's just going to be so much better if they're, if they, if they're paved. And so, we're going to make that effort to try to, try to talk to people that live on those streets and see if there's any interest in, in them participating in a pavement project, so.
So, the city's going to actively go to those neighborhoods and say, are you interested in this? And this is what the cost would be? Oh, I think that's really great.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's what our hope is, is just to reduce the number of lane miles that are not improved. Not, well, not paved. They're improved, but not paved.
I know they only blade those roads maybe quarterly, but it still has to cost a lot of money to have the equipment. It's a water truck, a blade, the, the guys that have the directional signs, cones. And then, you go from one to the other and then it rains and you have to do it over again.
Right. And that's, that's the thing, is that especially during monsoon season, you know, you just, you can't keep up with them, right? With days like this for months at a time, you can get away with blading them and walking away. As soon as you get a little bit of water on them, they, they just melt. And putting them back together is a lot of work, so.
I will say they're really great about getting out though right after. We do have big storms.
Yeah, the team does a great job with them. It's just, you know, what else could we be doing if we weren't doing that, so.
Exactly. Okay, good. I'm glad you-
Good questions, yes.
Manager Foggins, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, when you reach out to those residents to see if they're interested in creating the streets, the roads, you just have to get a certain percentage and then you go forward?
Fifty plus one percent. Yeah, they, they always refer to that as fifty plus one. So, yeah, that's, that's correct. It has, at least fifty-one percent of the citizens on that street have to agree to it. If they agree to it, then you can put it in place.
Ron, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
It actually jumps clear to the sewer, but it's a similar situation. If we can talk to some of the neighbors, I'll just refer to my street as a simple example, and get them to where they would sign on to sewer, we're looking at a similar situation as the roads?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Ms. Tina?
In addition to the fifty plus one in the citizens, it's also the property valuation, I believe, too. So, that plays a little bit of, of role in that.
Yeah. But for the most part, most neighborhoods, the fifty plus one is pretty equal. You know, if you have one house that stands out, then, yeah. But, yeah. And yes, it is available in sewer. And as you know, it's also available on curb gutter and sidewalk. It has been investigated by several neighborhoods recently, so. Unfortunately, costs were prohibitive on that, on that particular project, so, yeah. All right, transit. So, there's, we have two transit pages. One is our transit administration. Really, nothing to report in the transit administration. Really, the big change in transit is in our operations, the actually moving the, the buses around. And that really is due to a couple really important pieces. And supplies and services, we have an automatic passenger counter and camera system that we're looking to add to all of our buses. We've had, you know, kind of in our performance measurements, trying to understand how many people are actually riding the, the, our cart system has been a challenge. But also, we've had folks that have misbehaved as well as some drivers that have had some misconduct. And so, adding, adding the cameras are protection and I will say a help to us as we try to improve or keep a great level of service. So, there's that piece. And then, on the capital outlay side, last year, we basically told the state that we would go without a car, a new cart vehicle. And, because we didn't know if we could afford it or not. And we didn't know what was going to happen with the cart system, because no one could ride it or we didn't think anybody was going to be able to ride it. That, that didn't come true, thank heavens. But when we requested the, another cart vehicle, or our, our cart vehicle this year, the state called us back and said, hey, do you want the one you didn't get the year before? And we're like, well, of course we do. And so, we're getting two new cart vehicles this year. Of course, our responsibility is twenty percent of that. The eighty percent is paid by state and federal funds. And so, we'll be adding to our, our cart system, which we're excited about.
Ron?
Yes, sir.
I think it's important that we realize too that, you know, ridership and the, and the fares that they pay do not cover the cost of this. But because of subsidies and grants and everything, we are blessed to be able to run that. And I know even this last year during most of the COVID time, when the buses were running, the city was doing it for free, which was a huge blessing to a lot of people.
That's correct. And it's only been in recent, recently where we've added fares back. So, it is, it was almost a full year that we offered cart, the cart service for free.
Yeah.
And I think it, it's, there's been a little bit of silver lining to the pandemic, and that is people being able to ride free have kind of figured out that the, the cart system is actually a pretty good system. And the ridership after being free and that we're charging for it, I think we, we're expecting that that ridership will, will continue to use cart. But yeah, the, the fees that are being charged for the use of cart are not covering the cost of cart.
We're blessed to be able to have the system.
We are, especially for a community our size.
Yes.
It, it's, it's almost unheard of to have a city have the cart or bus system like we do for thirty-two thousand people. But, I mean, that's, we, we were doing it at the right time. And, you know, it doesn't hurt that we're surrounded by another community of, what, twenty-five thousand people or so, so. But yeah, the, the cart system is a blessing to those that have, that need public transportation. And, you know, over the next, as you recall, we went through, or have been going through a cart user and operation study. And we hope to improve that in this next several years. One of the things that is being looked at is, are the routes the right routes? Are we, you know, are, are, you know, one of the things that's always been challenging is kind of the, the hub of where all the cart vehicles meet up. And that's next to Walmart right now. That's very congested. It's currently working, but will it work in the future? Is there a better spot for it? Just a lot of that kind of stuff with cart is going to be upcoming, so.
I know we've talked also, it was brought up in the past on council about, for example, ridership out to the airport and trying to get a, a line out to that way.
Yeah, and just to report on that. So, we did multiple efforts to get the, the companies that are out there doing business to, to see if there was interest in, in a cart line. And there just wasn't any interest. And I, we weren't sure ultimately if that's because the different companies have different times that they, their shifts come on and off. But they just, they just could not get, they just, they're, no one was showing any interest in, in the service, so.
As you look at future roots, routes-
Routes.
Routes. Are you considering, and I know it's not a given, but the advanced manufacturing center? If MCC is able to pull that together, which I, you know, it's promising, that, that would be a location, it seems to me, that would help augment the, the population getting to that.
So-
Maybe it goes by there now, but it's certainly on my, I think, on my mind.
No, it, it doesn't actually. And so, with, with the construction and opening of two possible TIs and a commercial corridor that's going to have different commercial than what's available in our uptown and downtown markets right now, is there's going to be, there's definitely going to be another route that's going to need to be added-
Go ahead.
To, to that, because getting people, you know, to their jobs and away from their jobs is really important. And with new restaurants and new commercial businesses, it's not only getting people there to shop, but it's getting people there to work. And so, yeah, they're, they're, when those are, when the East Bench opens up with those TIs, that, that process of looking at what the routes need to be and, and running-
Go ahead.
At that point, running, if you're there on Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, getting to the airport, Industrial Park becomes that much easier rather than having to, a straight, having just a straight shot express vehicle that goes to the airport just for, just for the manufacturing businesses. You would have an excuse to have a line that-
Have it extended up there.
Yep.
That would be fabulous. Thank you.
Yep, you bet. All right. All right, our enterprise funds are the next item of, that we want to talk about. As Tina covered in the, in the project, or in the highlights, there isn't really anything that's super impactful. There's some really important projects that we're tackling. As far as the operations are concerned though, we have really not a lot to report on. There's electrician two that's being reclassified, a pretty important position. Our fire hydrant maintenance workers are, again, that two-oh-two's being replaced and they're all going to two-oh-three. And then, as far as their, their capital outlay, they have, again, not anything really spectacular, just really important to their operations. A six-yard dump truck that's, that they, they absolutely need. And then, a trailer-mounted VAC excavation unit that will allow them to get into tighter spaces than the VAC truck will allow. This will take away a lot of handwork that the, that the team is having to do, especially with, with mainline water breaks in tight areas. So, recovery of breaks, recovering from line breaks will be much quicker. And so, pretty important to the overall system. There's some computer upgrades that are, are needed. And there's pressure, pressure-reducing valves don't sound very cool, but they're amazing because they're really expensive. And if you don't put them in, you break people's pipes and we, we, we will ruin water meters. And so, all, all important things, but not, not that fun. But Kealan thinks they're awesome, so. So, under our wastewater operations, again, not, not a lot of changes here in our operations side. We have the, and their capital, probably one of the more important items is making sure that our SCADA system is up and operational to know if, you know, you want to know if the sewer plant shut down, pretty important. So, our SCADA system license renewal, and we've got, we've absolutely got to do equipment upgrade there. It's, it's expensive, but absolutely needed. And then, we're also going to do a wood chipper and dump truck this year. So, we won't be having to rent a really expensive wood chipper into the future. This should be overall a pretty big cost savings to the department.
Ron, I've got a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
I just thought of it, but-
No, you're fine.
Just real quickly on water operations.
Yes.
We had talked, and I think there's already a preliminary program about meters or electronic meters-
Yep.
For reading, and those are already being installed in some areas.
Correct. So, the electronic water reading meters are going in. They're averaging about ten a week on replacement. And the, the effort really is going to pick up over the next couple of years on replacing those, so that basically those electronic water read meters will give us real-time data. And it will also, hello? It'll also give us the ability to see if there's a, an immediate leak at a property-
Right.
Where we can notify the property owner that they're going to have a high bill or they need to check it and see what's going on at that, at that property. Right now, what we have in place is our meter readers read the meters. And if they see a huge increase, that, because they're familiar with- a huge increase that, because they're familiar with what the address normally has, they don't know if you put in grass and other landscaping and that use 30,000 gallons of water to get that lawn established. That may sound like I'm speaking from experience, which I am. But that electronic, if that was happening in real time, the computer system would have flagged my account and I would have gotten a call from utility billing going, there's something wrong at your house. And I would have been able to report, yeah, there's something wrong. I put in, I put in grass. And so that's, that's the beauty of that is it'll really, water conservation wise, we won't have that water run out of the system.
That's really the more important issue.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Yep. And that water conservation, I know, you know, Rob reported on this a number of council meetings ago about our efforts for water conservation. And this is a big one. This is, this, getting the system rolled over to electronic meter reading is huge. It really is. And having it be in real time is, there's nothing like it, so.
And of course, hence the more increases we're seeing in, you know, technology, technology department increases because of all that.
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thanks.
Going back to water.
Yes.
Is there funding in here for anything associated with the site selection for new wells and aquifer in the Sacramento and/or any work that's being done for diversification?
So yes, we're, yes, there is. And one of the things that we're doing is an evaluation on our existing well system in the downtown area where that, where we sit right now is part of that Sacramento water system, the aquifer. And so what those wells can be versus what they are today is being evaluated as well as what can we do further out into the Walapai Aquifer are all part of what we're going to be looking at in this next year.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay. I think that is all for sewer. Solid waste, really, Tina has already covered the solid waste piece of it, and that's really the replacement of vehicles that we, you know, prior to, this is going to be, I don't know what the, what the team's going to do, the solid waste team, you know, we basically have a bunch of trucks and they work on one truck while the others are out, or they work on multiple trucks while they're out. And when they break down, they bring those back and take the other ones out. When they don't have to do that, I don't know what they're going to do. But, you know, they've got plenty to do. But the replacement of those trucks is really exciting and we should see, you know, we've, one thing I reference back to our citizen survey is that our citizens really love our solid waste service. And we've, they scored the highest, are one of the highest departments on the services they provide. And I'm excited to be able to improve their lives because they're improving so many or the livability in our community is definitely added when the garbage goes away. And it's not something that we all think about very much. Well, some of us think about it more, but, but the rest of us don't think too much about it. You put your can out and it goes away. But there's a lot of effort behind that. And so being able to add new vehicles to the fleet is going to be a huge, a huge add to their service. All right, airport. So we're kind of getting used to running the airport now. It's now been three full years. Took over the airport May 20, May 16th, May 15th, 2016. I know that because I started a day after. And it, it's, it's fun to be part of the airport. It's, we're doing some great things out at the airport. The team has been fantastic. For those of you, well, everybody knows that interim manager Joe Husband is just wrapping up his stint with us. Just Joe has been a pleasure to work with, and I want to publicly thank him for his efforts to, he's really the one that helped us put the airport together originally, original airport budget, he helped us piece together. And he helped, of course, put this one together. And Doug is taking over for Joe, and we're excited to have Doug on the team. The budget for the airport is, again, we didn't really know what to do for the first couple of years. We're finally starting to get a feel for it. I think this, with our track record, we're now feeling much more comfortable with adding personnel. You know, we ran a pretty skeleton crew, not knowing exactly what, what our personnel needed to be. We are going to be adding that full-time maintenance operation, maintenance specialist, and we will be able to provide personnel at the airport seven days a week with that additional person, which has been needed for the entire time we've been running it. The capital outlay, there's going to be a purchase of the airfield lighting equipment. This is very expensive equipment, and it tells people whether they should land or not. So it's really super important. And then we have a couple of other minor capital outlay projects for the airport. You know, as you all know, the airport lives and breathes by grants, both from the state and Fed. And of course, we are going to continue to work on grants from both the state and feds for our improvements. And I will just say that before anybody can ask, their DROSS is budgeted in our capital, in our CIP program, not directly in their operations. And we're hoping that the DROSS cleanup will start in fiscal year 22. Again, I'll say that biting my tongue a little bit, knowing that we're working with the federal government on it. But we've currently, we're currently planning on the DROSS cleanup happening in fiscal year 20, starting in 2022. I don't want to make it sound like it's going to be done in 2022 either. It'll be an ongoing project. But anyway, that's, that's the airport operating budget.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
So I was looking, there's about $35 million worth of investment in this upcoming budget, mostly grant funded or the DROSS site.
Right.
And some of these projects, they depend on the DROSS being cleaned up before they can go forward. So I'm wondering if we have other projects that could, could use that funding if we don't, if the DROSS keep, I mean, the first year that I was here, the DROSS was going to get cleaned up, right around five years later. So if it doesn't have, I mean, I would hate to see us continue to lose momentum when all these other projects now are sort of waiting. That wasn't the case before.
Yeah, so the DROSS has its own funding source, so, and any monies attached to that will roll with, with the DROSS project.
I was kind of talking about the, like the taxiways that are going to be rebuilt and repaved. Some of those are around that DROSS area, so those are the ones that I know we have funding, that we have grant money for, and we wouldn't want to lose it.
And I'll let the grant experts speak to that. Joe, do you want to take, take that question?
Happy to, Mr. Foggan.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is true. In particular, the Taxiway B project is, you know, there was some concern that because of its close proximity to the DROSS site, that we may have to delay especially Phase Two. I'm happy to report that we actually were able to meet with our environmental consultant and outside counsel that worked closely on the DROSS project. And we've come to the conclusion that the DROSS site won't impact Taxiway B. There's one small section where they'd like us to do some monitoring when we expose the area, just to ensure that there's no contamination there. We don't think there is. So what we've essentially come to the conclusion of is Taxiway B won't be delayed or impacted anyway by the DROSS site. And with regards to your overall question, what we do each year when we, we've just done our, our annual planning meeting with the FA and ADOT where we schedule and program our proposed costs for the next five years, we always look at that DROSS site and we sort of keep it in the, in the schedule where we think it needs to be just close enough because there is potentially some cost that's going to be borne by the airport for an additional lift of asphalt, but we're trying to negotiate that with the DOJ. But we always look at that, we always try to manage that so as that it doesn't tie up grant funds that might be available. I think we're in good shape. I think we're well planned right now, but I do appreciate your questions, Madam Mayor, members of council, that, you know, we do ensure that we're able to effectively use that, that federal funding when it's available. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
It does, thank you. And I just want to take this second to say that we're sure going to miss you, Mr. Husband.
Thank you very kindly. I'm going to miss you guys too. And I'm not completely gone, I'm still wrapping up a few loose ends as Doug directs me over the next month or so. So I'll be able, we'll be able to wean ourselves in a, in a measured way.
Well, what Joe doesn't know is the police department may not let him go that last day. All right, good question. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. There was, absolutely. All right, fleet services. So as indicated, with fleet services, we're, Jack has been working to, to make our fleet and the services we provide in the fleet much more data rich and to be much more effective and efficient. And so we're in the budget, we have a full-time fleet technician added as well as a full-time service technician as part of Jack's request. We, we don't have a huge increase in supplies and services, but I did want to point out that training and, you know, the opportunity to have a vocational program so that these folks are, are getting the most recent up-to-date information and learning has been incorporated into Jack's budget. And then on the capital side, there's some items that, that we just haven't been doing a very good job of taking care of, and that's tire maintenance. And then our overhead doors, you would think that that was a minor thing, very expensive, just very expensive overhead doors. And frankly, they're ours have run their life and they're dangerous. So I just wanted to make sure that we pointed that out as well. So that's kind of fleet services. We've, we've basically brought everything fleet services wise in, under the, under their umbrella, except parks and golf courses still maintain their fleet, but everybody else utilizes fleet services for their vehicles, so. All right, building maintenance, a large increase in building maintenance. I mentioned before that departments were taking care of or were budgeting for their own building maintenance items. This was resulting in bids and quotes that were all over the place. Projects that were being, that were needing to be done were just being delayed or not done. And so Jack and his team really got their arms around this, and we basically rolled all of the building maintenance projects into building maintenance. And I think we're going to see as a result, much better projects, much better costs associated with those projects, and a better schedule. And though, and it'll be done with a combination of internal personnel on lighter projects, or I'll say a little bit less time-consuming projects. And then Jack and his team will be working with, taking bids and working with contractors to do the bigger projects or those projects that are more specialized. Some of those projects, I just, I wanted to make sure and point out that we have some fencing projects, some energy reduction upgrades, much needed, roof repairs. We're going to take this conference room and update that, take the old shelving out, make it a usable space where it's not hardly utilized at all right now. The city Carl's entrance, the door sticks, everybody thinks it's locked, so that's been in need of replacement for a long time. We're also going to tackle some more basement type stuff and work on dispatch so that all the space is more usable. You never have enough storage room. I just, I wanted to point out that on the police building, so they're going to do some security, add some block wall, do some of that stuff. But in, as Jack and his team were out looking at these building maintenance projects, he showed me a picture that someone had painted on the police roof that says, "Don't step here." I'm like, whoa, that's, that's not good. So the, you know, soft, a soft portion of your roof is never a good sign. So we're going to be tackling some building maintenance at the police department. And I, and one of the, one of the things that we're going to be doing is at the powerhouse, one of the things I'm pretty excited about at the powerhouse is the, the conference room space has been pretty limited and, and we don't really have very many gathering places for, to do this kind of, you know, obviously for small numbers, we've got this room and small numbers at the powerhouse, but a revamping of the space for additional gatherings and hosting, some trainings where we don't have to go rent space to do it is really exciting. So there's a couple of building maintenance things that are necessary, and there's going to be some stuff that we're doing that is going to be great to, that how did we not do this in the past kind of thing? So as far as their capital outlay, there's some air conditioning units that are over 20 years old, they're just, they're constantly having to reset them and work on them. So we're going to be tackling some air conditioning units this year. As you know, those are pretty pricey items. So that's building maintenance. All right, what time is it? Five-year capital project. Let's, let's take five minutes and meet back up. Time-wise, that puts us, let's just say 4:25. We're missing Counselor Walker. Do we have, he was headed that way, so maybe restrooms, I don't know. I guess why we're waiting, um, before we start the five-year capital, um, budget conversation, um, is, as we wrap up, we've wrapped up the operations side, was there any outstanding questions that anybody had that needed, needed to be addressed or spoken to before we move on? There's no harm in going back. I, I have no problem with that i- is if we get to, to the end and someone wants to go back, but I just wanted to call pause on where we are on the operations side and if there was questions to make sure and get those answered. It's not the final call. You're welcome to ask them anytime, but just want to make sure that if there was anything you'd written down or before we talk about capital. All right. I'm not seeing anybody grab their microphone and, um, so we'll, we will, we will continue on the fun part. This is, we save the best for last, five-year capital plan. I'm, we're really excited about this, this plan, um, and we will, uh, show you why we're excited about it right now. So, the considerations and criteria used, obviously, as I think everybody's aware, we have a list of projects that are unfunded that we would like to do, but there's no funding source for. Um, but in order to be on the five-year capital plan, the projects that we're going to show you had to meet these criteria. And I'll just read through them so that, that everybody's clear on it. Does it, does it align with the council's strategic plan? Very important. Does it have a funding source? Probably the most important thing, right? Is there regulatory or public employee safety component to it? Which is always something that we're, we're looking to lens, is it, you know, for safety-wise? Will it generate revenue and/or reduce operating costs? What is the impact of deferral? And as, as you know, there's over the years, especially since two thousand seven, two thousand eight, there's been a lot of deferral of capital projects. It was, those are the things that were easy, easily cut, maybe shouldn't have been easily cut, but they were. So we look at that. And then will, will it increase service levels, uh, something that we're always looking at? And then what is the impact on the economy? Will it create jobs or increase our tourism economy? So that's kind of, um, what we, those are the list of items that we go through in which, um, to decide, uh, what to, to bring forward and what to leave on the unfunded, uh, list. So the first thing that we wanted to start with and make sure that everybody was, was clear on, Tina's already talked a little bit about this, our AZ cares distribution was three-point-six million. We received that in fiscal, early fiscal twenty-twenty-one and it's sitting in reserves because of course we had not budgeted anything for it, didn't know it was coming. Three-point-three million of that went to the general fund to, and then three hundred thousand, uh, was part of the dispatch center, uh, expenses. That money has been, um, distributed and is in our accounts. The American Rescue Plan Act distribution, seven-point-four million, we've talked about this. We have, um, very specific rules for this money. It has very specific strings. So, um, we, we have actually looked at the strings that are attached to this and what we're, what we're suggesting it be spent on, we feel meets the requirements that have been outlined by the federal government. It is, they have the interim guidance, um, out. We're still waiting for final, final guidance. There's a little bit that trickles in every day, which is, is been weird. And then again, I had mentioned earlier, the definition of a metro, a metropolitan city has been changed and has affected us and ultimately could affect us by two million dollars. It would take our distribution from seven-point-four million to five-point-four million, which we are fighting.
Manager Foggan?
Yes.
I want to mention that I attended a webinar that the National Lake of Cities
Yep.
had on this, um, American Rescue Plan money. And the very first ti- and they have speakers from the Treasury Department and the very first speaker brought up this issue of the definition of metropolitan. And it's a national concern. And so, uh, I, I think there, that that will be scrutinized, uh, and hopefully it will go in our favor, but becau- but there's a lot of, uh, lot of interest from cities all across the country and that's a good thing in terms of us
It is.
being able to potentially get, maintain that level of funds.
Yeah. Well, and I, you know, it's really funny because when they, when they announced this money and how it was going to be distributed, they attached it to CDBG. And I thought, that is so weird. Why, why would they attach it to CDBG? And that's, CDBG handles sewer and water projects and housing roofing. That, I mean, that's how it's used. We've been using CDBG to do our handicap accessible projects on Route sixty-six, right? We've used it for two main phases and now a third phase on sixty-six. And so it was really weird to have this money funnel through CDBG. Well, now we're seeing what the results are is because we combine our resources with Lake Havasu and Bullhead is how they've defined how they're going to distribute the money based on CDBC distribution and we get caught in that net. We're not the only ones that do it that way, as you pointed out, and there's many cities across the, the nation that are fighting this, so.
There really are, so I hope we keep the seven million.
Yep. So that's a, that's a little bit of the funding sources. We will show you, uh, shortly how we're proposing to use those. These are one-time monies. Uh, so, uh, one of the things that has come up, uh, several times is, isn't it great? The cities are getting all this money. Well, yeah, it's great and using it for one-time projects is great. Thinking that this is going to be something we use for ongoing, um, operations would be a disaster for the city because when the money's gone, and frankly, the, the American Rescue Plan Act distribution money has to be spent. Also, you can't sit on it. It has to be spent within a certain amount of time. Uh, so it's not something that you could say, oh yeah, I'm going to, we're going to float operations for seven-point-four million over a ten-year period. You can't do that. Uh, you can't put it in roads. Um, you can't just willy-nilly put it towards, uh, any project that you want or cover operations for a year. Just, that's not allowed under the guidance. So, um, we've, we've scrutinized that and I think we've come up with a plan that we can stand behind and we can feel good about and, uh, I think the council will like what we've, what we've come up with. So, um, federal funding uses. So what we've been able to do, one of the things that this funding allows us to do is cover lost revenue from the pandemic. That's one-point-one million dollars. The downtown, uh, streetscape is basically one of the things that we, we can do with the funding is that we can revitalize the tourism economy that we've, that we've lost. I can't think of anything, any better way to revitalize our tourism and then to improve our downtown to attract more people as, as an effort to get people to visit Kingman. So we're proposing two-point-six million dollars of the money, uh, be used in, uh, Phase One of our downtown. Uh, our proposal is also to use a half a million dollars of general fund reserves as part of that project. And then Phase Two will be, uh, three-point-seven million, uh, and that will finish the downtown streetscape project. Something that prior to the pandemic, we didn't know how we were going to fund it. We went on a, on faith and did the streetscape, uh, plan that is now over thirty percent designed and we now have some funding to actually do it. So there's those, those two phases. And then finally, um, an electric car museum, something that we've been talking about and trying to find partners on, uh, with, uh, with this project, uh, not being successful, Unisource. We started with Unisource. We also talked to Tesla and really got nowhere with either one of those companies. Um, but we are proposing an electric car museum as an addition, uh, to the reason to visit our downtown and a reason to, to visit Kingman. The point of the electric car museum is that we have, uh, electric car display now in the powerhouse. It is way undersized and we have, for, for one reason or another, we have been beneficiary of people that have wanted to donate electric cars. Not exactly sure if it was just our original interest in having that space be the electric car museum piece to our museum. What's interesting is if you Google electric car museums, there's no electric car museum that pops up in Google. There are some electric cars that are displayed in museums, but there's no, as far as we, as far as I could find in a Google search, I could find no dedicated space to an electric car museum. And in an effort to give people a reason to come to Kingman, to visit, to increase our tourism, we have, uh, we're proposing to do an electric car museum. And, um, so that is being funded, uh, by, um, the AZ cares money that we have. And so that's the federal funding. Again, the American Rescue Plan money is very specific to what we can use it for and, um...
Can I ask you about this?
Sure.
Is this a good time to ask you about the electric car museum?
Yes. Absolutely. Is your microphone on?
Yep, it's on.
Okay.
So I, I guess, I have a little bit of heartburn over, over this museum if it's just a big building with a bunch of different electric cars in it, but if it becomes an interactive museum where there's a learning center for the kids in our community and they can go to, you know, if they can annually go to this, this museum and learn about, you know, alternative methods for, um, fueling vehicles or, you know, and it turns into maybe down the road, MCC has a program where now mechanics are learning how to work on all these electric cars that are coming out. To me, that sounds like a great project. Far better than a building with electric cars that I don't know how, I don't know how many people are, are going to be drawn here just for that, you know, especially since we're not seeing other cities that have a muse, museum that, that are really looking at like electric cars. So if there was more there, especially something for the youth of our community to learn more, you know, about these cars and how they work, um, that would, I, I would support that, I guess is what I'm saying. So I'm, I'm asking, what does this museum look like?
So, um, you know, what you're describing is, I think, how, how this facility can transform over time, right? And, you know, it's, it's interesting that looking at the history of these vehicles, it just, just the history of it and knowing that electric cars, some form of electric car or electric vehicle has been around since the thirties or, um, forties, which people had no concept, you know, they, you know, it's like that, that's never going to happen and now we, we live in a world where it's actually happening. But the learning piece is certainly something as we move forward, the sophistication of this having, uh, well, you know, I'm a big fan of strategic planning and having a plan, an ultimate plan for this space, uh, is going to be important and, and the sooner the better, right? And, you know, one of the things that Gary and his team have been working on is a neon sign, a, a walk that would walk you past old neon signs. The idea of this being The idea of this being, neon signs being part of, of this museum is, is part of that discussion, right? So the learning piece, you know, we were just, you know, we, we know that lithium batteries and that lithium is now a thing in Arizona. And we now have someone who's going to be mining lithium not far from us. So the opportunities, I think, to partner on these education pieces, the history of the battery, the technology, what goes into it, I think that's all within our reach. But we have to have the facility first. And then we have, but part of that is having a plan for what it can be today, what it can be tomorrow, and what it can be next year and the year after that. So I, I totally agree with you. I, I don't think that you can just put, put the cars in and go, oh, we're open. I think you have to grow with it. And I think the interest in, you know, electric cars is, is growing. I, I was just having a conversation with someone who has an electric car and is excited to visit Kingman because we're talking about having supercharging stations here. And they've, they're, they're, they now are planning trips based on where they can energize their cars, right? And so, you know, giving people a reason to stop. And if you, even in the supercharging chargers, it's 35 minutes, we've got you captured. And getting you into the powerhouse or getting you into the downtown or getting you into the electric car museum is ultimately, that 35-minute stay results in two hours, then that's a win for Kingman, so. But I agree, I think there needs to be a strategic, we need to have a strategic plan and a vision for this. And it, and museums have to be more, just like libraries, right? Libraries have had to transition into more than just places where you check out books. Museums have to do the same thing. And a strategic plan for the museum is absolutely necessary. And, and the first part is, how do we get the doors open? Second part is, how do we get better? So, yep.
I, I really want to endorse that because electric cars, we're talking about the past when you use the word museum. And it is really an opportunity to celebrate the past and its future.
Agreed.
And, and in terms of education, we know that there is, as you say, there's this increasing interest because there's now federal policy driving us that way, for one thing. But also just the whole alternative fuel with hybrids and electric and fossil fuel driven, leading ultimately to like, total electric. I think there's just all kinds of opportunities for learning and for
Yep.
making it community-based.
Well, and there's, as far as alternative, you know, I like the use that you had of alternative fuels and alternative energies. You know, we have a company that is actively looking to come to the Kingman region that is going to have clean fuel, clean gasoline, cleanest you can possibly get. Wouldn't it be great if we could partner with them on some, you know, fossil fuel education as well?
Absolutely. And I think, you know, I think that would be a great opportunity. And their process, I mean, everything's visual now. And they, I know they've already visualized their, on their website, their process for developing clean fuel. So all of these could be components of a really dynamic. I hesitate to say museum, but maybe that's the right word.
Well, I don't know.
But whatever it is, whatever it is, you're right, you start with had a place for it. But thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
No, I appreciate that, yes.
Ron, I know when I heard this idea, I thought, that is out there. But as I just showed the mayor, when you Google it on your phone, what comes up is Kingman, Arizona. And that's what we want, you know? And so if we can push this.
Is your microphone?
Yes, it is. You know, it's an interesting idea when you think about it, approaching, attracting people here. Let's face it, everything's going electric. Ford just debuted their, their pickup truck in this last week. And how, there's already over 40,000 reservations for it. I mean, it's just, it's huge. And so if this puts us on the map, it's a great idea.
Well, and one of the things, you know, just like, you know, the powerhouse is an amazing, it's, it's an amazing visitor center. And, and the, the museum that's in it is, is great. And the museum next door is great. Another attraction within the downtown area is just that much more, I think, marketing. And, you know, Route 66 is just such a, you know, every time I drive on 66, I just, it just makes me smile because as a kid, I, you know, just Route 66 just has this place in my heart. And thinking of cars and just history, it just seems like a nice hand-in-glove fit to, to what we're offering on Route 66. And again, being able to be the one and only or the first is, I think, something that's pretty exciting. And having it morph over time to be a community asset as well as an attraction is what this needs to be to be successful. If the community loves it, it's going to stay around. If people come and visit it, it's going to stay around. If you got both, it's, it's a home run, so.
Ron?
Sir?
I don't know if everybody knows it, but how many cars do we own?
I don't know what the total, total is. There's so many spread out all over the city. Gary, are you on? Do you know how many?
Yeah.
How many electric cars do we have?
I want to say, Ron, at the last count, I think, including what's in the museum, we have over 100 automobiles. It may be more than that, but we've got them stored all over the place.
Yep.
And on, and all different types. And on the age of some of these cars, they go back to the early 1900s. We have one in there that was, you know, it had like 1908. I mean, that's, that's how bad, that far that technology goes back, so, yeah.
Thank you. And we have a Porsche, right?
We have a Porsche, and we have one of the classic cars that came out of the collection, Laughlin collection too. So the Porsche came from a doctor in, in Oregon, or in, I'm sorry, I think in Washington, yeah. And he, he paid for the delivery and everything, and it's running.
Yeah, they won't let me drive it, though.
No, no, we all want to crack at that one.
City manager car. So, so the electric car display, if we don't like museum, I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with whatever.
Whatever. It also opens up the opportunity for the space in the powerhouse to be looked at and considered for use, really positive uses.
Which in the past has been also highly utilized by groups to gather as part of celebrations. And having that space come back would definitely be welcomed by the, by the tourism team.
I saw that.
Yep. All right, any other questions on the federal funding? All right. So, so our fiscal '22 CIP by category is, in pie form, looks like this. And the, the big chunk, of course, coming out of the streets, the airport with the, as already been mentioned, the Dross site. Wastewater has a very large project that you've heard about over the last years or maybe even more is the, what is referred to as the downtown downfall line. And then we have some, what would be, I guess, smaller projects, but still big projects, parks and rec. We will, we will get into those, those projects as well. Public Safety, 2.9 or 3 million that we will talk about, and then facilities. So our total CIP is 1.40 million, 140.2 million. All right. So this is by category what ultimately this looks like. The big, the big winner in this is the streets. Of course, that is, the biggest portion of that is Rancho Santa Fe Parkway and TI project, which is progressing. And we, we expect with the adoption of the right-of-way by ADOT last week, all the right-of-ways now taken care of, except for one piece that's still in litigation. That's based on a price that will be paid for that little small piece of ground. But we're, we're in ownership of that. And so the project's actually ready to go. So the next step will be to finalize the TI plans, get them at 100%, which they are 99.9% right now. And those will be submitted to ADOT. My, my guess, if I was to guess on timing-wise, that with the remainder of the ADOT process and to awarding the bid and groundbreaking, we probably be in fall for a groundbreaking on Rancho Santa Fe TI if, if we continue to go the direction that we're, we're at right now. So I'm pretty excited about that. As far, everything else is kind of far behind that. Airport coming in second, that's really, for the most part, the Dross project. And then, of course, water and sewer have their own large projects that they're tackling right now or coming up. Funding-wise, I don't know that it, is there anything you wanted to say on funding?
No, maybe just on the debt proceeds. It might just be important to point out that we do plan on borrowing over $34.9 million on some of these projects as we, as we discuss them. So when we're going through them, we'll be sure to point out which ones are going to need a debt proceeds for that.
And then we just, it's worth pointing out, on the contribution side, the large contribution is, of course, $20 million coming from the state for the Rancho TI. The developers' portion of the TI and Parkway is part of that. The Dross, yeah, the Dross, the, obviously, the feds are covering the, what we're currently planning is $30 million for the Dross site. So that's, that's the contributions, if you're wondering why that number's so big. You know, when you add 20 million and 30 million to that, it's, you know, it gets up there rapidly. All right. So what we wanted to do is talk to you about the projects. Make sure we're, we've answered any questions that you may have. As, just as a reminder, all of these have, currently have a funding source. And that's why they're on this list. So we're going to continue our branding, beautification, and signage project that was started this year. We've, and basically, those are monument welcome signs. As you come off all of the different freeway exits, there will be a welcome to Kingman sign. It's currently being designed. Not sure exactly what ultimately it will look like yet. There's some concepts being floated by a designer. And, but that will have our new logo on it. And it will be, it will definitely welcome people to our community and be something that we can stand behind. The other part of that is that we're currently working on a design for digital signs that will be placed in strategic areas around the city that will communicate to our citizens, specific programs that we're offering, different events that are going to be in the community. And that will also be logoed with our new, with our new logo. And ultimately, not exactly sure what that design will look like. If you've been, if, to get a feel for kind of how that sign will function and look, the design will not probably be the same. But if you've been by the new hospital, if you've been, not, not, not the new hospital, if you've been by the hospital, there's a new sign, not the one at their entrance, but the one on the corner, we're going to, we're basically going to do something like that. Some of them will be double-sided, depending on where they're located. Some will be single-sided. One of the, a couple of the areas that we're looking at for communicating, these communication signs is at the Y where Beal and 66 and Highway, or where Beal, that Y, I don't, where 60, where you loop off? Yeah, yeah. So, so there, at, we own property next to Walgreens. I call it the triangle property. And then we have property at the other end of Stockton Hill by the new Safeway. So I think the major thoroughfare of Stockton Hill and 66 will be covered. We're also looking at one by our recreation department, by Centennial. Centennial is so heavily used that that's another location we're looking at. We're also evaluating if there's other spots. But that's, that's what we're working on right now. We're going to continue, continue looking for banner, light pole banner opportunities. If you've noticed the banners on Stockton Hill, I think a great add to, to the Stockton Hill corridor welcoming. Those are going to be changing soon to an American flag theme for the summer holidays for Memorial Day, Fourth of July. So we're going to be looking to do some of that stuff. So that's our, and there's going to be a landscaping component to, to those welcome signs as well. Where we're not, we're going to actually try to beautify those off-ramps a little bit so that it's not just a great sign and then weeds and, and yucky. So I'm going to, going to do that as well. This building is in desperate need of HVAC. The electric car museum, which we've talked about, the cart buses, we've already mentioned, the powerhouse conference room. Again, pretty excited about this, to be able to add bigger space, to be able to hold our, house our own, our, our own team meetings as well as accommodate other groups. We have the project management platform that has already somewhat been addressed. So I don't know, there's much to be talked about there. Public Works, one of the things that we have been concerned about is emergency management. You are going to see a couple of emergency management items in here. Keeping the power on when the power's out is pretty important to some of our operations. So Public Works with a new generator that can run the shops and make sure that we can repair, you know, equipment when, when it's bad weather and the power's out. I mentioned the Route 66 drive-through shield. That's actually being done right now, but won't be finished until the new fiscal year. So this was actually budgeted in '21, but we're just rolling it over to '22 because that's when it'll actually be finished. Centennial Park court lighting. And then that's in conjunction with Centennial Park Field Five lighting. These, these are in need of, of updating badly for field, for player safety. We've absolutely got to tackle these. And I will say that the court lighting piece is, we just unveiled or cut the ribbon on our pickleball courts. The first thing that someone said to me is, where's the lights? Well, they're coming. What's interesting about that is we had the tennis group that uses the tennis courts daily actually raise $8,000 towards this project. So they're, they're pretty passionate about it. So they're kind of putting their money where their request is. Talked about the cart replacement at the golf course. We left the ice rink in here. It's, this was a private, this was a private project. We've not heard from the group that wanted to put this together, but we thought it would be fair to leave it in there. It was a private donation money driving it. So it only felt fair to keep it in until they tell us that they're not going to do it anymore. I, I would say it's more of a bookmark or a courtesy than anything. So pickleball courts, we just opened our pickleball courts with great success. Not in this fiscal year, but in upcoming 2023, we plan on adding to that facility. The interest has been overwhelming and the courts are being used already heavily. Our playground equipment replacement program is, we continue to budget that. We've done, over the last couple of years, we've, we've added shade structures as well as improvements to play structures. And we, we're going to look to continue And we, we're going to look to continue to do that. The recreation center, we've talked about. We are, we've got to design it. We've got to find a location for it, and then we've got to build it. And so there's a few steps prior to it being built. We're proposing to pay some cash for it and to bond for the rest of it. Not exactly sure that we've got the right number in there right now. But to, to have the conversation and to keep it relevant, we thought that it was important that, that we have a number in which to start from. So there's that. The Sunbelt Sports Park, the Sunbelt Sports Park is a challenging project. What we're running into with the sports park is that the amount of drainage across that property is, is large. And the, the first thing that needs to happen with it is a drainage system. The current quote that we have is one point nine million dollars just to fix the drainage. That's no fields being built. So we're going, we're going to work on a design for this, and we're going to work on trying to figure out how to get the price for the drainage down. And if that's possible. We are going to actively work on it. We have three hundred thou, just a little over three hundred thousand dollars of old impact fee money that's remaining, that we're planning on putting towards this project as well. Right now, we're, we're planning on working on it fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. My, my goal is to have playable fields right after we get the drainage fixed. I think that's, obviously, we can't have the park wash away in a monsoon. So we're going to have to tackle the drainage first. There's a lot of amenities that have been proposed for that, but I want to have play fields as soon as possible. So we're going to work with an engineering firm to, to get this project kicked off. And hopefully, we can build as much of it as we possibly can in the next two years. But I will put a bookmark in there for you saying that it is possible that we get to the end of fiscal year twenty-three and the park is not fully developed. And that we'll be looking at some way to fund the rest of it. But our number one priority is to get play fields.
Are there opportunities for recharge in, in collecting that water and, and sending it back down?
There would be if we owned any property. If we used it there, it would take the entire park.
It would.
Yeah. There, there, there is a silver lining to that, and that is that the work that we're doing on Rancho and the work that we're doing with Sunbelt on their, on their detention basin will reduce some of the water that runs across here, that, that will reduce the size of the channel. Ultimately, what that means, I'm not exactly sure on price. The, when, I asked that of the engineering firm that helped us put this plan originally together, they said it could drop it to one point six million instead of one point nine million. That's a savings, I guess, but I, I need, you know, every little bit we can get. But that, we're going to continue to work on that. Obviously, we need to do a, we need to find, we have a concept plan for it, but we need to finish a full design of the project as well.
Are the schools willing to pitch in at all for that? I mean, because their, their school gets destroyed every time it, it, we have a heavy rain or snow.
So the school drainage, or, I'm sorry, the school, we are fixing the school flooding, but that's, that's further to the west, further to the west, that that's being fixed. Now, we've worked out a deal, so we've worked out a deal with the school to use their property that's right next to, right below. And in order to make the, the drainage work, it has to go across their property and get into a, a channel on the other side. So it's not just a matter of we fix the drainage on our, our project and then let it dump out. We, we have to fix it all the way down. The school's participation has been that they're, they're leasing us the property, their property, for quite a while to develop additional sports fields on. So they're not putting any money up, but they're, they're, they're using their land. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're fixing their prob, we're fixing their school problem with a different project. Yeah, it is, yeah.
Ron?
Yes, sir.
I know City of Scottsdale, of course, had this problem decades ago with Indian Ben Wash, which they have turned into parks, but it's also drainage to pull away, you know, floodwater. Of course, it would ruin the, it ruins the park part of the time during, when you have a flood, but fortunately, we don't have that many floods, but we do have them from time to time.
Yeah. Again, not wanting to dig this one down to, to do that is kind of, I think, the point is that we, we, when you dig it down, you lose, you lose space.
Right.
And so fixing the drainage in a channel seems to be the, the best solve for this pro, for this particular property. But like I said, part of what Sunbelt is doing is, is going to reduce some of the water across that property. But, I mean, when you look at the, when you look at the stormwater modeling, the amount of water that runs across this property is staggering. It's huge. I, I don't, I, I don't think it was, the developer said, this is junk property and I'm going to give it to the city. I don't think that, it just happened, that's just how it happened to be because it's located next to the school. I think it was a nice marriage. But that's what we're left with, is trying to solve the drainage.
Thanks.
Yep. All right. So trail development and enhancement. I think everybody, if you haven't heard, we were successful and we were, we were nominated and received a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar grant from State Parks to do additional park or trail development as part of the White Cliffs Trail System. It'll add an additional five miles to the trail system, which is super exciting. And so trail development and enhancement will continue to be a focus and part, and to be honest with you, it'll be part of our tourism attraction efforts as well. And I, we're right now in the process of developing new brochures to get people to our trails, and I'm pretty excited about that. Of course, White Cliffs Trail is budgeted for a hundred thousand. That number's probably going to change because of the grant. So it'll be a hundred and fifty-something thousand when it's all said and done. Okay. So the police department, they really need a block wall as part of their security of their building. Their exterior facility maintenance, I've already mentioned with regards to roofing. And of course, our police department is also our emergency, our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center. And so having a generator that can run air conditioning, heating, all the outlets, all the lights, that needs to change. And so we're proposing a new generator for that facility so that it can, in fact, operate as the EOC. Of course, the training room will need to be, additional work needs to be done in there to make sure that it's computerized fully so that in, in an EOC operation, that it functions the way it's supposed to be. Probably one of the bigger ass is in, is the apparatus, it's a quint for the fire department. This is a pretty important piece that has been on the CIP for several years now. And we had every intention of purchasing it last year until we slammed on the brakes. And so that, that, that apparatus will actually go and, and replace two pieces of equipment. So that's a pretty important piece for the fire department. In twenty twenty-two, moving down, the, again, we've been really successful with remodels. You'll see a number of remodel projects, including fire admin remodel, and then all the stations getting some kind of, of fix. We, one thing that we wanted to do that we weren't able to do with Station Two was to fully do the training room. What you saw in the open house, if you, if you went to it, was a nice compromise. But that space with the training tower and all the training happening at Station Two or a majority of the training, having the training room or training area be that much better. And this, and this will also be, I think, part of the ground, outside on the grounds as well. So just, again, enhancing training and what we're doing to make sure our firefighters, when they show up to a fire, are fully ready to tackle whatever they, whatever they run into. There's a number of out projects. I'm not going to spend a lot of time unless somebody has questions about them. And then on to dispatch, computer-aided dispatch, we've talked about that. It's, it's, that's going to be a really important piece. Make us, that, we're pretty efficient and effective now. This piece of app, this computer system will make us even that much better. And addressing and getting people to the emergency location will, will be sped up dramatically while the, and that can happen while the dispatcher is still taking information from the person reporting it, which is something that they have to currently kind of call timeout, dispatch, and then go back to the person. So you can, you know, when you're in that situation, you certainly don't want to be put on hold or told to wait. So this, this will definitely help us with that. And then the priority dispatch emergency fire software. This is an alerting system that's built into the stations that get our people moving before they actually pick up the, and know what the emergency is. It gets, starts getting them dispatched earlier. All, all things that are designed to, to, to get us there that much faster. Okay, what everybody's been waiting for. So the street projects. So currently, we have the street projects as the I-11 airway avenue to Prospector or from Prospector to Rancho. That's part of the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway project. We have the Kingman Crossing Boulevard in there. Now, there's been a request and there will be a report. Councilor Staley had asked for an update on Kingman Crossing interchange and connector and the project. I met with the hospital CEO. Your question was perfect because I've been trying to get a meeting with Will for a while. And Will got Ron Alt up from Phoenix, and we had a great conversation. And so I've, I'll have a good, a good report on that. But we've got that in there. And we're, we're really pushing, we, we think that, at least the suggestion is, that if they can coordinate this, there could be some really great cost savings, economy of scale stuff, if we can have these projects roll back-to-back, which is Rancho and into Kingman Crossing. The, the problem that Kingman Crossing currently has is their plans are only at thirty percent. And it's going to be about, it takes about a year, believe it or not, to take those plans from thirty percent to a hundred percent. If every, if the stars line up, it could be nine months. But, I mean, we're, we're dealing with ADOT and private entity, so I'm, I'm suggesting it's probably going to be a year. But that actually puts it right in a, in a great timeframe for the, if, if we can make that work, where the contractor could roll. The MOB cost would be down, and there'd be some cost savings there. So we've got that budgeted. Of course, the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway TI, I've already talked about that one. Our CDBG money, so we're going to be using, utilizing CDBG money again on Route sixty-six to do more ADA improvements. We've talked about the downtown streetscape project, the eastern street improvements. So from airway up, what's that street? Caliment, yeah. So up to Caliment is grant-funded for the most part, that grant funding. So some work has been done on right-of-way acquisition. And so there's a little bit more engineering design for that. And then the funding that we're scheduled to have hits us in fiscal year twenty-three. That will be a huge improvement for those people that live down there, those people that live on that runway street, I think it's Diamond. This will be a huge relief for them. I've, I feel bad every time I have to drive on their street. But this will fix that problem and re, and fix the alignment of eastern. So that's a pretty exciting upcoming project. We have the safety corridor project that's going to run over the next couple of years. And also Stockton Hill project that was, that's money that's been awarded by the state to help improve safety on Stockton Hill Road. The I-40 traffic interchange landscaping, I referred to that already as part of our sign project. And so that landscaping design is being, is being designed right now. And as soon as we have a design for the, basically, for the, the signs themselves, we will start, start that work on, on improving the, kind of the, the entrances into our city. Light, lighting power upgrades, these are just, obviously, as the infrastructure, as power infrastructure and our, our lighting, street lighting needs to be improved. We've, we've, you can see we're carrying that through. I think, for the most part, you've seen us do LED street lighting. I think that's, is that what we're, Jack's referring to, right? So we're just going to carry on continuing to do LED lighting of our streetlights. Pavement preservation, we've already talked about that. So it's three point seven in twenty twenty-two, and you can see it for the next four years past that. Again, that is not sustainable over, over time. As we add to our services, one of the things that we've talked about is adding a fire station to the east bench. As soon as those kind of projects start coming to the forefront, the, that money will be, will come away from street maintenance and go more towards those kind of projects. So having a funding source for streets is going to be necessary, it's frankly necessary this year. But where ultimately needs to be in place is, is in twenty twenty-three and on, so.
If I can quickly just go back to the lighting power upgrades.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Because I started to question the LED. They're actually cabinet, the cabinet upgrades at the, at the, at the lights.
Oh, yes. So, thank you. I am like, that doesn't sound right. So part of our, this is part of our street lights, not the, not the lighting of the streets. The streetlight infrastructure, the computer system within our streetlights is becoming outdated and needs to be updated. Thank you for that. I'm like, that doesn't sound right. And so the, those cabinets need to be reworked. And in order to make sure that they're fully functional, we can, and obviously, we've talked earlier about having the camera systems, those camera system, the software and the hardware in our cabinets need to be reworked to accommodate those as well. So that's what, that's what that is. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. That's why you're here. Keep me straight. Thank you. Let's see, pavement preservation, oh, snow equipment, yeah. I, I think our last adventure on the hill was enough to have Jack and Rob I, I think our last adventure on the hill was enough to have Jack and Rob pulling their hair out going, we need to do better. And in the last three years, with a record snow amount and with the, the freezing snow, ice that we dealt with in the last one, it was, it's clear that we don't need hundreds of thousands of dollars of snow equipment, but we need some snow equipment. And so Rob and, and Jack put together a plan, $100,000. We'll be able to spread some, we could be able to spread and push, spread sand and push some snow, uh, which is, would have been very helpful, uh, this last ice snowstorm. So, uh, and then a transportation master plan. This is, I'm not going to say overdue, but much needed. And I have, I was happy to see it come up and, um, because, um, our, our transportation system has changed dramatically over the last couple of years and we've added a number of lane miles. And the transportation master plan needs to reflect that. So that plan is scheduled for 2022. The airport has a good number of, of projects in it as well. No, nothing super big, but, uh, well, $30 million is super big, but nothing that, that we haven't talked about that is super big. Uh, there's some industrial park roads that we're trying to get upgraded so that they go into the county road system. They were put in and kind of no specifications were used when they, they've been there, they've been there a while. So that will upgrade them and they will go into the county system. There's a drainage study. When we have monsoons out at the airport and at the industrial park, there's water that's, needs to be managed better. We have airport berm maintenance that has got to occur. Airport drainage improvement, it's pretty small, but that needs, so we've got a number of drainage issues that we're trying to deal with. Covered tie downs, we're trying to do some rentable covered tie down space for $200,000. I think that will do 10 spaces at the airport. Been requested a number of times. There's environmental cleanup of 16 acres. So we have a really important 16 acre piece of property that's high vis, really valuable, that is currently brownfield, that needs to be cleaned up. If we're able to sell that, it'll cost us $300,000 to, to clean it up, but we'll make another $300,000 on the property at least. And so there, it's pretty substantial cleanup, but the value of that property overall will be a win for the airport. There's the land release and master plan that, that we, that I'm very anxious to get started on. And then we have what we already talked about, which is the Pappy replacement. That's the signal, the, the lighting system at the end of your runways. $500,000, really important. And it's, um, it's, it's a little bit faulty right now, so desperately needs to be fixed. Security fencing needs to happen. And then the one that Counselor Staley brought up, which was Taxway B, 2.6 million, that's federally, that's a grant project. And then Taxway D, another half a million, and I believe that is also a grant project. And so those are the projects that we're proposing for the airport this year.
And I think it's important to point out with the airport that of that $47 million in projects, $45 million is either coming from contributions or from federal or state funding. So that's really exciting for the airport.
Oh, for five years. Yes, okay. If you're wondering, Tina was talking about the entire five year. All right. All right. So I have 5:25 and this meeting is supposed to be over at 5:30. And I've got just a few slides. I guess I need to ask you, would you prefer to, that we just continue on? And then if we get through this, we actually don't have to come tomorrow? Up to you. Everybody good? Okay. All right. Well, I'm not even going to suggest a break. I'm just going to say, let's, let's sally forth. All right. So we've talked a lot about this, the solid waste truck replacement. That is ongoing for all five years of the capital, five-year capital project. Under stormwater, we have, the major project is the airway avenue drainage improvement. This, um, this project is 1.3 million necessary and absolutely has to happen. And with that, we need a storm, as Tina mentioned, we need to finalize our stormwater rate study. What you will see in a slide coming up is a number of drainage projects that are unfunded on our wish list. It is a big number. And every time it rains, my phone rings with people that are upset or being flooded. And so that's something in the, in fiscal year 2022, just plan on talking about because it is something that we cannot do with the current funding, which is being allocated to us by the county. And we get a roughly $700,000 and we've got $25 million worth of drainage projects that have to be done. So you're not going to get a lot of drainage projects done with, with that, so. On wastewater, um, we have the typical relocation, replacement projects. The diagonal wash interceptor happens to be a really important one. We've talked about that over the last couple of years. That is the sewer project that will take sewer to the east bench, that will make the Sunbelt area as well as the rest of the east bench, uh, give them the capa, sewer capacity that they need to develop. The, um, we've got the, you know, we've got some sewer plant improvements we've got to do. And of course, the big ticket item on sewer is the 14.9 million dollar sewer, um, outfall line. That one is absolutely critical. It's a huge number, I recognize, but as part of that project, it, we have our sewer line to our downtown sewer plant that is fragile in that when we get monsoons, it gets exposed or is in danger of collapsing and puts us in danger of having DEQ violations and EPA violations. And so the replacement of that line really isn't optional. It's a, we have to do it just to hard, to harden the system and make sure that it is getting the sewer to the right location.
I was just going to share on that project, that's one of the projects that we will be borrowing about 2.3 to 2.5 million dollars. And because it's a fiscal year 22 project, that will be coming to you shortly in the next probably three to six months for the borrowing of that.
Yeah, the rest we're doing with cash. So it's been anticipated for some time. This isn't a new project, but we're finally to the point where we're actually ready to construct it, so. A dump truck, I think I mentioned that already. And then reclaim water recharge well. As you know, we've been working on this project for quite some time. We will finish it in 2022. That will put just over a million gallons of water a day back into our aquifer. So as part of our, as part of our water conservation efforts, this is going to be one of the bigger ones. Where, uh, we've also done a number of dry wells last year and, um, and we're feeling like we're doing our part to, to, to recharge the aquifer as much as we possibly can, along with not losing water when we bring it out of the ground. It's how much can we put back in? So those are all really important parts to the system. We have, of course, extension, just random extension projects that come up as development occurs that we've, we're budgeting, we always budget for. And then a system repair and replacement, we, we, again, budget for these amounts across time because history shows that we, that these projects are, we may not know about or we do know about and they need to be done. And then wood chipper, I think I mentioned that we're currently renting, renting one once a year and this will allow us to do more composting that needs to happen at the treatment, at the Hilltop Treatment Facility. Lot of projects underwater and, underwater, in the water department, not underwater. Ken brought up, Vice Mayor brought up the automated meter reading system. Again, our plan is to chip away at this and over time, bring the entire system up to the automated meter reading with a big push in 2023. And then one of the bigger, more important projects is the upfitting, refitting of City Well 10 pump and motor system. That is one of our more important well sites and having a new pump and motor system is going to be extremely vital. And, and actually going to a new pump and motor system will actually save us money too because it'll be a more high efficiency motor. So distribution lines, again, um, as the city grows and we, we look at distribution lines, we, we're budgeting, um, over time for those lines. We're also going to continue to work on our drought contingency plan. That will act, that's really kind of important because if we have, when we have the drought contingency plan fully done, that we will actually qualify for federal, more federal grant funding for water conservation projects, which is going to be in, as we do dry wells and that kind of thing, we can actually apply for and be successful in grants. So it'll actually return some money, possibly. The dry well installation, we are so pleased with what happened with our last round of dry wells that we're going to just do that, continue to do the projects each year and do as many as we possibly can for $350,000. This last year, we did eight dry wells for 300, I think it was 350,000 is where the, that number came from. And so we're going to continue that effort. The main tank number four restoration, uh, that's a storage tank that we want to make sure is, um, is it, that's the restoration or is that the newer? Yeah. So it ends, this, this started out as a rehab of a 1960s storage tank and cost wise, it turned out dollars a head to just replace it. And so this is going to be a replacement tank. The, um, again, transmission, transmission lines and the main tank, um, getting the lines away from the main tank, of course, are going to be important to that as well to make sure that it's usable. So that eight point, or 1.9 million is going to be crucial to delivering water into the city. The Santa Rosa Transmission Line is, is the big project for the water department. That is basically the east bench water line that will be needed to help in, for the development of the east bench. And unless there's questions about any of the other projects, that's kind of the water departments. Tina, you got one that you?
I don't, I just wanted to share the funding source.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah. The Santa Rosa Transmission Line and the distribution lines, a portion of those total projects will also need financing. And since some of those are fiscal year 22 projects, those will be brought to you sooner than the wastewater financing will, probably within the next couple of months.
Questions about water? All right. As promised, um, the kind of, the project, unfunded project list, we just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we are still tracking these, we, they're still relevant. They're just currently no, uh, what, there's no funding source for these. I do want to stop and just point out stormwater at 25.2 or 0.3 million dollars, some kind of funding source is going to be necessary. And so the stormwater fees that we're going to be showing you in probably the fall are going to be vital to us being able to tackle these projects because currently the funding that's being shared just doesn't even get close. And really, there's two pieces to, to the funding that we receive. A portion of that is what projects can we tackle and how much of that is maintenance that we have to take care of existing drainage system? And it can't be split three or four or five different ways and it just won't go that far. And the number of just maintenance items that aren't even a part of this are, are hanging over Jack and his team's head. Every time the phone rings and someone's upset about weeds in a drainage ditch, we're pulling those people off and we're going to, to fix that. We're, we're doing no proactive maintenance of our drainage system and that, for me, is worrisome. And so our proposal is going to be moving forward that we have a stormwater enterprise fund that operates by itself, that has its own funding source and that we have dedicated revenue from what the county gives us and a drainage, some kind of drainage fee that we can actually start tackling the maintenance on a regular basis as well as the projects that are listed here. So just, so you know, we have this ongoing list. We know it and we, we keep it in mind every time that we go through our five-year capital project list. These are weighed against the ones that actually make, make the list. So, and it's a big number. Did you have any? Okay. All right. The quote, Steve Jobs, "Great things in business are never done by one person, they're done by a team of people." And again, I, I want to thank all of you for coming. I want to thank you for your input. I want you to know that it was used as part of the development of this budget. I hope you see that. I need to stop and thank my leadership team, the senior leadership team and their teams spend a whole bunch of time on this, on, on the numbers that they provide. And they have to come and talk to me and be quizzed about them and I appreciate their indulgence in, in that process. And I hope that over the last couple of years, that we've made major improvements so that they don't feel like they're being picked on, but that we're being, that we're being as, using the money in the most effective and efficient way possible. And then finally, I need to thank Tina and Melissa again because really what you're seeing, PowerPoint, the document, the compiling of the numbers, all rests with Tina and her team and it's, her team is an army of, of pretty much two. So, so thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present the budget to you. It's, I'm a little bit nerdy about budgeting. I love, I love budgeting. Tina, as Tina knows, I, I get into the weeds a lot on, on budgeting. But what, what we have for you, I think, is absolutely the best budget that we could bring to you. It's an exciting year for a budget. There's nothing worse than having to count paper clips and pencils and being able to actually show up and provide some livability. Projects is really exciting for us and we're happy to be able to do that. So thank you.
And we thank you, Manager Foggan, for your leadership in this as well.
And we thank you, Manager Foggan, for your leadership in this, as well as Director Mulane and, and Melissa Ellico. You're just amazing team and the whole, the whole team, whole leadership team of this city is so professional, so dedicated to the wellbeing of the city and its citizens. So I think on behalf of everyone, I would say, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I would also add that in nine years, these, this is, this is amazingly efficient, so easy to follow and understand. And I appreciate the, the work that's been done to be able to present it like this in one afternoon. And for us to all get the information we need. So, thank you. And if there are any, any other comments? If not, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.